Good evening. Welcome, everybody. This is the June 14th Town of Lake Clark Shores Council meeting for the year 2022. Mayor, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Paul Schalhoo.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoo.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Bautine Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
Here.
Pastor. Would you be so kind as to do the invocation this evening? And then lead us in the pledge allegiance thereafter?
Be my honor.
All right, thank you. Then we all stand.
Thank you. Let's look to the Lord. You, Lord, are a shield about me. My glory, the one who lifts my head. I call out to the Lord and he answers me from his holy mountain. Father, in this place, this very day, we seek your guidance, your wisdom, and your direction. Father, I would pray that your spirit would be evident in this place today. That even in the midst of chaos all around us, there would be calm. Father, that we be peaceable. And Father, that your will would be accomplished. We can only do this with your wisdom and with your knowledge. We come before you in thy precious and holy name. Amen. The pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor. Always beautiful.
Thank you, Pastor.
Dan, were you able to turn down the AC? We got a lot of wonderful people here. I don't know if it's because I'm wearing long sleeves and a coat, but it's a little warm. I don't want anybody to be uncomfortable while you're out there. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
If I may be heard on the approval of the agenda, I believe we had a line item of unfinished business regarding speed bumps.
All right, you want to add speed bumps to the unfinished business as line item C?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a... Why don't you make that in the form of a motion?
So I'll make a motion to amend the agenda under subsection seven, and we'll add C to the ongoing discussion of speed bumps.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all in favor of passing the motion as, sorry, the agenda has amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Motion approved consent agenda. Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to presentations. We have Ms. Geiger. Someone from the way back. Welcome.
Wanted to take just a couple of minutes of your time and introduce myself. I'm Rhonda Geiger. I'm with the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics. I've left a ton of our little booklets over there. They all have my business card in them. We just want to remind you that we're here. We're here for you guys. Like we always say, ask first, act later. It's in the book.
Rule number one.
Rule number one. And let us know. That's what we're here for. You know, we'll answer any questions that you have. They can come in the form of a simple answer or an advisory opinion, whatever it is that you guys need, but just remember that we're here. And we'd much prefer to deal with things proactively as opposed to reactively. So all the contact information is in the booklet. My business cards are over there as well, and I've also taped one inside of most of those booklets. So if you have any questions at all, reach out to us or just to the commission in general. We're here for you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to the next presentation. Truly one of the greatest honors of having being mayor and serving on this council is the ability to recognize our officers in town who have gone above and beyond and provided exceptional service to those who are in need in our community, whether residents or not. And there are three in particular officers that deserve certain, certainly a lot of recognition today. Those officers are Sergeant William Howell, Officer Reynaldo Pulis, and Officer Edward Manick. If y'all could come up here, please, so I could tell everybody why we're recognizing your exceptional nature today. So on May 1st, 2022, these three officers responded to an emergency call at 1511 Forest Hill Boulevard with a man down. When they arrived, they found two individuals unconscious and on the ground. They were two females. They evaluated the situation, and thanks to their training in not only first aid but CPR, they evaluated that the patients were suffering from a drug overdose and were not breathing. They performed CPR and administered Narcan to one of the patients who regained consciousness and started to breathe on her own. Then they moved to the next unconscious female and did the same thing, and they were both able to regain consciousness and transported immediately to JFK Hospital by Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, where their lives were saved. Unfortunately, they left behind an eight-year-old child and three large dogs on the scene, and these officers were able to assist in getting the daughter and the dogs taken care of with family members. If it wasn't for the swift actions of these three wonderful officers, those two individuals likely would have passed away that day. So on behalf of the town, thank you very much for your job well done, and we have some life safety awards to present. Chief?
Come down. Get your picture.
This is Officer Manick. Your pulis.
Looking good, guys. Looking good. All right.
Wonderful.
We just had that today.
Thank you. Sergeant Howell, Special Traffic Safety Initiatives Award for distinguished service to our community. Right.
Thank you, Governor.
Additionally, not discussed yet, but Officer Pulis did some old-fashioned police work on May 18th of this year. He came across a man who was very lost. He was an elderly gentleman, didn't know where he came from, how to get back to where he needed to go. And Officer Pulis called a few people, dug into where he just was at a Burger King, and eventually was able to find his daughter's house and was able to bring him back to his daughter's home where he could be safe. So Officer Pulis, another commendation. We have a great police department, and I'm thrilled to have them serving our community day in and day out. All right, we have no quasi judicial proceedings, no public hearings. Then move on to unfinished business. So let's move on to the subject to sewer discussion. All right, so first things first. Any council want to speak on the subject sewer topics, or you want me to just lead off where we are?
Lead off where we are.
All right. So at the moment, we have almost completed the design for the Michael West portion of the project. We have, we've submitted for permitting, and we have applied for funding. We actually recently obtained some funding for the Pine Tree Bridge. Earlier in the month, I advised that we got specific funding for the Septic to Sewer Conversion Program. That was unfortunately misinformed to me by our lobbyist, but the $600,000 for the Pine Tree Bridge can be allocated to offset the cost for the Septic to Sewer Conversion, because we already had that money budgeted in the infrastructure fund for the replacement of that bridge. So that money hopefully will be used to offset the cost for the overall conversion when the entire plan is completed. We also have some news with regard to the 4E plan that you hear Mr. Clark touch on a little bit later, but that was approved by DEP. So our alternative restoration plan that we submitted was approved. This puts us in a much better position going forward to get funding and grants from the legislature and the state going forward. So all things fortunately are moving in the right direction, and hopefully soon we'll have some updates on permitting. Any questions or issues from the rest of the council? On that. And we're going to open up the topic for Septic Sewers during the audience comments. We want to get through some business first, and then any additional issues we can address at that time. But I do know that we, I think we have some. Do we have any comments here? Yeah, we got one person who wants to talk about it during audience comments, so we're going to address it then. Dan, anything else you want to add to that topic while we're here? Okay. So now we have to approve the Jones Edmonds and Associates Task Order 2203, which is under Status Reports. If you can go to the Jones Edmonds, you'll see that task order, and it's also in the unfinished business. Any discussion on that or a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And moving on to speed bumps. Councilman Gonzalez.
Well, I know that it's been 30 days since we issued a moratorium of, I believe, 90 days, and that we would have this ongoing discussion of speed bumps in our neighborhood and where we stand on them. I know that last month, we had a resident that was concerned about the Venetian Way speed bump, and I'd like to possibly talk about that and maybe analyze that specific speed bump as I do think that, you know, those residents did have their application in prior to making the moratorium, and it would be a good topic for discussion since Venetian is its kind of protected cul-de-sac there. They really don't have any protection from people speeding like what Pine Tree does. Pine Tree has two speed bumps going in and out, and so I'd like to discuss it. I would be for moving forward or as an exemption to the moratorium for Venetian specifically.
Okay. Anyone want to discuss that? Councilman Rodriguez?
I don't know if I'm ready to second that question. I, one of the concerns I had is like proliferation of speed bumps. Okay, and I get there may be a particular reason, but you know, if you agree to lift the moratorium for that and then...
Councilman Rodriguez, sorry for interrupting. There you go.
If you agree to, sorry. If you agree to lift the moratorium for that one, I don't understand why someone couldn't complain that we're not lifting the moratorium for their street and their pending application. I think what we need to do over the next, now we have 60 more days, is really figure out what the purpose of the speed bumps is, what they're really needed. When I talked to the Assistant Chief in the past, he's told us that they put speed bump trailers out, speed trailers out there, and the speed's not there. So I'd like to get more into that. Quite frankly, Bobby, I have not had enough time to really get into the issue of the deeper issue of speed bumps. So just on fairness grounds, I don't think we should lift it for just one particular location and then tell these other people it can't be lifted for them. I think we should just be consistent and review it. Just my opinion.
I'm in agreement. That's how I see it.
If I may. I'd like to see some guidelines put in place. I would like to see recommendations from staff. In particular, if the purpose of speed humps is to slow traffic down, I think there's a study out there that says that that's not speed bumps, speed humps don't do that. And I also like to figure out, before you put in speed bumps in, is to have the speed trailer out there, do an analysis of exactly what the issue is. If, we all know that perception is reality. So if they believe that there are speeders, I think you I appreciate what you said, but it seems to me like the issue is with their neighbors, not with people outside of our neighborhood. Just so, you know, I think we all know, we know half a dozen, maybe a dozen people that live on Venetian. And if, if they can't patrol themselves, pick up the phone, call the chief and say, you know, Johnny Speedy. I think we've all picked up the phone and, and talked to the chief and said, look, our next door neighbor's kid is, is racing up and down the up and down the streets of LCS. What can you do about it? And I know that they've, they've gone to the neighbors and they've got to sit down with them and talk to them. So I want to, I want to see some guidelines, and I want to see some recommendations. What do other municipalities have for putting in speed humps? That's what I, I think we need to also appreciate the terminology that Mr. Clark used, the people that are affected by speed humps. I'm affected by every speed hump in this, in this town. You know, not just the one over here on Westlake. And then what's the damage done? What's the response time if it's compromised by emergency vehicles? You know, when the speed humps, you know, a lot of people said the reason why there's no speed humps on Westlake Drive is because of Shalhoo. Well, I would like to think that I have that much influence in town, but it wasn't up to me at the time. So I think that, you know, you need to have some, you need to have some data, and I think that's what, that should be part and parcel of the guidepost.
On that note, I think if the data, it's, we're in a unique situation. One speed bump is completely different than a set. Like if you've driven down South Olive Avenue anytime in the last handful of years, it's awful. Because it's literally what every 50 yards it seems is a speed bump. It's just, it's absolutely insanely bad for your car, but you you jump off the road as quickly as you can to go somewhere else to get north and south. That's certainly not something I would want to see here. So it's speed bumps multiple, that's going to have a different result than just one located wherever it is on a street. So I don't know if they done studies on one particular speed bump versus a whole set of them. Imagine the results would be vastly different, because one is just, it slows you down for a couple of seconds. I mean, I see it all the time when I leave. They slow down for the speed bump, and then they accelerate, and they either get back up to 25, or they get to 28, 29. And then rarely sometimes I'll see someone who gets to the, where it's, you know, telling you to slow down or whatever. But that's just my experience. So if you're going to be looking at statistics, Dan, with the staff, if you could focus in on what would be applicable to us, meaning one speed bump versus sets of them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
To clarify, I just want to make sure I'm not, you know, advocating for more speed bumps. I know that it was several residents that had approached me, and they were very concerned. I know that there was a lot of topic of conversation. So I think that what everyone has said here in the panel is extremely true and correct. It does impact, you know, the emergency routes coming in and out of our neighborhood. And to your point, I think that there are many people, the people that do speed are the same people that don't care about their cars sometimes. And there was a Mythbusters episode years ago where they actually measured to see if you hit the speed bump faster, is it, you know, more comfortable to go over the speed bump? So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to table our discussion until we can, until our next meeting, until we have more data.
Sure. I mean, we already have it for 16 more days. I don't know if you, we need a motion on it, if anybody wants to vote up on it or second it.
If it's coming back in 60 days, that'll give staff enough time to fill us in on the necessary backup documentation.
I think so.
Chief, Dan? 60 days, okay?
Yes, the statistical information on the speed signs that had the data processed is 90% of the people are compliant with the speed limit, and then you have the 10%. But last month, we wrote 50 speeding tickets and stop sign traffic citations, and those were in town, not on Forest Hill. Know that's a problem on Forest Hill, I guess.
That's pretty good for one week, chief.
That was for a month.
I was sarcastic.
All right.
Well, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, I was about to say, well, there was no second, so it'll be, that's fine. Okay. Any additional discussion on speed bumps while we're here on the topic?
Just real quickly, you have used the word speed hump and speed bump interchangeably. They are different. Speed bumps are not allowed on the street. Speed humps and speed tables are. So know that there is a distinct definition for all three of those.
I appreciate the tribe. Whenever I said it for the council's appreciation, I was talking about speed tables, which is what we currently have in town.
Correct.
And Chief Adams, I didn't see you back there when you, when we started the meeting and presentations. Would you like to come up and say anything?
Was he going to say, tell us about speed bumps?
Yeah.
Upstills.
I'm sure everybody would be curious what your thought is on, on how speed tables impact emergency vehicles.
Slow down the speed and might have less, less injury, but it's also going to slow down response time. Exactly. I know we have a little bit of an issue with our travel time coming in here, so I can see, definitely see both sides of it. So please don't hurt me on the way out. Thank you so much for having me at the picnic. It was absolutely delicious. It's very impressive, really impressive picnic. Thank you. Just to give a quick report, do you want me to give a reporter wait?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Please do.
So we had our annual fire rescue awards banquet for the 2021 year just a month ago, and I'm very honored to tell you that in your area here, a gentleman by the name of Adrian Castro won EMS Captain of the Year. So very talented, very professional EMS captain that you have serving your area here. And also, we won Paramedic of the Year as well. So we won out of 1,800 employees, this particular area, my area, your area, two very talented individuals. So I'm very proud to give that news to you. Also very proud to tell you that we are a pilot program in this area for whole blood. Most common reasons why people will die in trauma is losing blood, and it's very difficult to offset that. So we, our medical director has stepped up, and this particular area, we are going to be carrying on our EMS captains' whole blood. I just did a little biology lesson in the back for you guys. The body has 10 units of blood, so we are going to be able to give you two units, and we can give you one unit in two minutes. This hopefully will be lifesaving to some folks. We're super, it gives me goosebumps, super excited about this pilot program. So as this evolves, I'll be able to give you some more information, but it is definitely coming. We have our refrigerators at my station now, where we'll be able to house the blood, and there'll be refrigerators on the EMS captain's vehicle. We're going to be able to provide that service to the citizens.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, so, um, let's see, in May, we ran 39 calls here, 26 of them medical, two of them motor vehicle accidents, and the rest of it assists in fire alarms. Other than that, I just came off a 10-day vacation, so I'm super happy and relaxed right now. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. That's wonderful. I want to tell you personally, I know I've made mention of it a few times. Thank you so much for your support of our barbecue. Bringing the fire truck and the beautiful American flag was one of the highlights of the barbecue. So many families and kids loved it. I know I enjoyed it, and bringing my kids out there, they're looking up going, oh, my gosh.
Pretty cool. I got some cool photos, so thank you. Absolutely. However, we can help. That's what we're here for.
Thank you very, very much.
Can you share with me one of those photos? I actually had somebody ask me for a photo of the fire truck with the flag.
Yes, I will. I will send it to you, and I do have a bunch. I did take a bunch of photos.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll take a copy, too.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Really appreciate you coming to our meetings.
Oh, and I got to eat lunch with the Assistant Chief here, which by the way, we went to the Fire Academy. How many years ago was that? Like together, 1986, we were in Fire Academy.
Oh, wow.
1980, 1990.
I was about to say, I think 96 would be more appropriate. Thank you, chief. All right, moving on to new business, a site plan review, 1501 Forest Hill Boulevard. Is anyone presenting any type of positions on this, Dan? I think I have a couple of comments here that might be appropriate for our consideration during this topic.
I think Jim Fleishman, our planner, was planning on making a couple of comments.
No, hey. Yes, please come on up and tell us what's going on.
Mayor, members of council, my name's Jim Fleishman. I'm the consulting town planner for Lake Clark Shores. I have a brief summary presentation. I thought the applicant was going to have a PowerPoint tonight, but I guess maybe not, so. I'll, I'll...
We were provided a plethora of information ahead of it.
Okay.
If I may, he is...
Sure. My name is Bill Ronberg. I'm with the architecture firm that submitted this package. I believe Matt Knopf of HGE is waiting. I saw him on your screen a little while ago, so.
Okay.
I believe he is waiting to make a presentation after Mr. Fleishman.
Okay.
We put him in as a presenter, and when Jim's done, he'll have an opportunity to make his presentation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, mayor, members of the council. The applicant Guidepost LLC has submitted a site plan application for the conversion of an existing medical office building located at 1501 Forest Hill Boulevard to a childcare center slash preschool facility. The property itself is within the multiple-family residential zoning district. However, daycare facilities are permitted accessory uses in that district. So it is, is permitted use. If you have the staff report in front of you, I'm going to make a few references to the report as I go through my presentation. The site plan on page two of the staff report includes the proposed childcare center and the, the office building to, to its north. The reason for including the rear office building is that the daycare center, in order to meet the parking requirements and traffic circulation requirements of the town, both buildings must be included in terms of the capacity of their parking lots. And that, that would require a shared parking between the two buildings to, to provide adequate parking. A major portion of the staff report is focused around analysis of the town's parking standards as they relate to daycare facilities. The town code requirements for the existing office and proposed daycare facilities, facility are presented in table three on page five. All alternative requirements using Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE standards for daycare facility are presented in table four on page five, and that results in a range of... And that results in a range of 45 to 55 spaces. If you, if you take town code requirements as they are listed in the code and apply them to the, to the daycare facility and the office, the office building, that would result in the need for 60, 66 spaces. If, if you take the town's code requirement on the northern office building and ITE standards, which is nationally recognized office requirement, parking requirements for daycare facilities, the, the required number of spaces is reduced substantially to between 45 and 55 spaces. The, the proposed parking lot, which is illustrated on page two, contains 49 spaces with, which is within the range of, of the ITE base parking demand of 45 to 55 spaces.
And wait just before you go for it, that's not including the shared parking?
Well, well, that's what the shared, the shared parking would, would need to provide.
Okay.
The, the 45 to 55 on, on both lots. The, the conclusion is, is that 45 to 55 spaces using the ITE standard would provide enough parking to, to serve both of those uses. However, they would have to have a shared parking agreement so, so that both of those facilities could use the 45 to 55 spaces. It's, it's kind of complicated.
And what if there's no shared parking?
If there's no, no shared parking, then, then the staff, staff recommendation would essentially go away. That they would have to have, we have a condition of approval, number one, which, which states that the shared parking agreement has to be in effect before any building permit could be issued. If, if the site plan is approved, subject to that condition, and they get to the point where they have applied for, for building permits, but they don't have the shared parking agreement, either the building permit process is delayed until that happens, or ultimately the site plan approval would go away. That's, that's the way we, we have set up the staff recommendation. So whether or not the, the facility occurs really is dependent upon execution of that shared parking agreement.
If there's no shared parking agreement, what happens?
Then, then the approval, it becomes null and void.
There's already an approval?
No, no, that's what we were asking for, for you tonight. We're asking for you to, to approve it, subject to the shared parking agreement being executed and, and filed with the clerk of courts prior to issuing a building permit.
Can we approve without a shared parking agreement and not require a shared parking agreement?
Well, I suppose that you could, although the, the, some of the parking spaces are on the medical office building. Some of the parking spaces are on, are on the daycare center. There's, if we're looking solely at the number of spaces on the daycare center, it's woefully inadequate. And, and we probably would not want to do that.
Okay.
Okay, let's see here. So the, if you look at page, page two, again, that, that shows the two buildings and the location of the 49 parking spaces throughout both of the properties. And if, if the shared parking agreement is implemented, we're stating that, that those 49 spaces should be adequate to serve both of those uses. And let me see here, got a little lost in my presentation. I'm sorry about that.
I derailed you. My apologies.
No problem. Actually, the, most of, most of the applicant's description of the project and justification of, of the project, staff really had no issue with and, and the principal issue really is, is the issue of, of parking spaces. And the applicant spent a great, a great amount of time in their justification going to the ITE Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Studies and using their standards as opposed to the town's. And in, when I first got involved in this project, we had a, we had a meeting with, with the staff, town manager and the applicant, and it was, it, it was staff's opinion that generally speaking, that the town's parking requirements really need to be overhauled in their entirety and, and that they're, they're out of date. And they generally identify more spaces that, that are needed on most projects. That's part of the reason that we're recommending that, that parking requirements don't necessarily need to meet, need to meet town standards at this point.
What's the status of a shared parking agreement?
You're going to have to ask, I, I know it's not executed. You're probably going to have to ask the applicant that, that question. I know it's in process. That, that's about all I can tell you. And really, like I said, the, the staff report focuses on, on the parking issue. And really, we have no issue with any other aspect of, of the project. Nor do we really have the, the technical expertise to, to evaluate the floor plan student ratios, things like that. Now, they do have to get a, get a permit from the state, state of Florida, which is, which is administered by Palm Beach County Health Department. And we also, they're the ones, the agency that really would be making any detailed recommendations on the design of the facility, the, the design of, of the play area, number of students, thing, things like that. And the way that process works is, is that once there's a site plan approval here from, from the town, then they go to, to the state Palm Beach County Health Department. And then they would, they would do the detailed item by item review of, of the proposal to make sure that it meets state requirements. So we have another condition in, in the staff report related to, to the timing of, of when they would have to get, get that approval in relation to the town's issue of, of building permits again. So if I can, if I can draw your attention to page eight of the, of the staff report, that's, that's where we have our recommendation and it is a conditional recommendation of approval. As I said, we focused primarily on the issue of parking to, to come to our conclusion that the parking is adequate based on ITE standards. Staff recommendation on page eight, and I'd like to read that into the record. That's okay?
Sure.
Staff recommends approval of the 1501 Forest Hill Boulevard Guidepost Montessori School Site Plan subject to the following conditions. Number one, building permits shall not be issued by the town until the shared parking agreement is executed by all parties and filed with the official records of Palm Beach County. And recommendation number two, prior to operating the childcare facility, applicant shall have the site plan reviewed and a site visit completed by childcare inspectors of the Florida Department of Health in Palm Beach County, in Palm Beach County Childcare Program to determine compliance with chapter 59 dash 1698 Laws of Florida and chapter 2010 dash 249 Laws of Florida. And that is Palm Beach County's rules and regulations governing childcare facilities. So staff recommend approval subject to, to those, those conditions, which, which will, number one, assure that a shared parking agreement is in place. And number two, that, that the facility meet, meets all state, state requirements for childcare facilities.
I just have one question. Assuming the owner of the other facility or let's see whoever's occupying the other facility that have to be a part of a shared parking agreement, doesn't want to enter a shared parking agreement. And we approve this site plan subject to a shared parking agreement. Essentially, the owner of that or whoever's in control of that building and parking is in control of their own destiny when it comes to shared parking at, at that location. Does that make sense?
Are you talking about if, if the shared parking agreement is not executed, then the owner of the daycare facility would have to meet its entire requirement of parking? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know. My, my understanding is the people who, I could be wrong, who are the other building don't want to share parking. So I'm saying if we approve it subject to a shared parking agreement, those people, that business is in control of their destiny from a shared parking perspective. We as the council can't sit there and force them to enter new, enter into a shared parking agreement.
Well, that's true. That's absolutely true.
So if they want to share parking, then they can share parking and as long as the Montessori school passes all the other permitting and analysis, et cetera, from this county, the state, they would be good to go.
That's, that's what we're recommending, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Fleishman?
I had a question regarding, and I'm, I'm seeing here a boundary line, I believe. What are the number of spaces that are exclusive to this potential Montessori school?
I'll tell you the truth, I'd have to, I'd have to go back.
Is it?
It's, it's not many.
So, okay, so there's two parking spaces and it may be a little bit difficult for, for you to see it, but you have one essentially that's on the north side and one that's on the east side of these two buildings. Is it the case where the north prop, north parking is exclusively for the north building? And this easternly parking here is exclusive to the Montessori? Or is the parking solely inside of this boundary line that's theirs?
Under the shared parking agreement, there, there would be no spaces that, that are exclusive to, to either of the buildings.
Correct, but absent a shared parking agreement, I'm trying to just get an understanding of how many parking spaces this building has on its own.
Let me see, I, I think under, under the current situation where both buildings are, are medical office buildings, they still don't meet the, meet the parking requirements. Here, I can.
Are you talking about the town's code for parking?
Yes.
Yeah, I think he just wants to know how many spaces are available to the proposed Montessori school building? With no changes being made, just how many spaces are there for people to park their cars? Am I right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I counted 16.
Yeah.
16?
Yeah, yeah, some, some of the, some of the existing spaces are, are going to go away because, because they're, they're building a recreation area for the Montessori school on, on the southern portion of the existing parking lot.
Correct, but the plans as submitted, taking into consideration maybe it's a little bit bigger. So this used to be parking. It's now going to be the mandatory, the required recreation area.
That, that's right.
This is a boundary line here. It looks to be a boundary line of this particular property. Is it safe to understand that whatever's in this property line is their parking? Or is this entire portion here for this building? And similarly, this parking is for this building?
What, you mean if, if there was no shared parking agreement?
If there's no shared parking, just the way that it stands.
Well, now, well, there's actually, there's actually two lots there. And where, where the boundary line is between the two, two lots, north of that, that boundary line would, would be the parking lot for, for the north building.
Okay, that answers. Thank you.
Let me confuse it just a little bit. I understand it. When you say shared parking agreement, it's not with building that's immediately north?
That's true.
Correct?
Yep, that's true.
You're talking about, and I'm just going to say Joe Bananas, because Joe Bananas doesn't, owns the parking lot. Right? And these people are just coming in for the, for the, the, this other building, say building A and building B. And you have Joe Bananas, okay, that owns the parking lot itself. True?
That I am not aware of.
Mr. Shaho, are you saying that the buildings are a different entity than the parking lot owner?
That's what I'm led to believe, Mr. Clark.
There are five buildings on what we might consider that large site. There's five buildings within the one driveway that gets you off of Forest Hill Boulevard and into that complex. Of those five buildings, three of them are owned independent of the parking lot and the parking lot is owned by others. Then when we get to the two buildings that we're talking about right now, they actually, within the boundary of that parcel number, have some parking independent of those other three buildings.
So this Montessori school, according to the IT, only needs about 17 spaces?
Well, well, that, the, the IT has, has three different ways to.
You've suggested 17 to 27 spaces, right?
That's if you look at the low end and the high end.
Right.
It would have to fall somewhere in between. If you wanted to select the low end, you could. If you wanted to select the high end, you could.
But you see, in a daycare facility, people drop off their, their child and then leave.
Right.
So they're not there all day long.
That's true.
And I'm sure they're going to have staggered shifts. I think it was noted by you in, in your report.
Right.
And they're going to have, what, 15 to 20 permanent employees there all the time?
Right.
Again, maybe in different shifts.
Well, they're going to be staggered.
They're going to be staggered too.
Yeah.
So what, what struck me as odd, we have a professional office building. And according to LCS code, it's one parking space for every 200 square feet. But for a daycare center, we have one parking space for every 250 square feet.
True.
And knowing that, that child is, that they're going to be dropped off and, and leave. And they're not going to stay there.
They don't drive either.
Yeah, they don't drive.
Well, well, that, that's part of the reason, I think, I think, think why the, why the staff wants a total relook at the parking standards.
Well, that, and that's, that's a separate topic.
It is, absolutely.
But I think he's getting at is what I was asking earlier. Can this be done without a shared parking agreement in this site plan? Can they create 17 parking spaces for the Montessori school without a shared parking? And do whatever, build the playground, et cetera, that they want to do?
I, I'm not sure if there's, if there's 17 spaces on, on that particular portion or not. If, if there are 17 spaces on, on that portion, on that lot, that, if you will, and you're, you're willing to use the 17 spaces as the standard, then I would say yes.
So there is a way to do it. Oh, yeah, we have to make some decisions on that. That's what I was curious about. Like, is there any other way to do this other than a shared parking? I don't know what the other owner or whoever this other entity, individual is going to be. I got a comment up here from someone says, we have no shared parking. I don't know if that's against shared parking.
Yeah.
But I know that there isn't an agreement or an agreement to enter into an agreement yet.
Yeah.
So I'm sitting there thinking, well, what's the other option?
Right.
To make everybody happy and get the Montessori school in?
Yeah. Well, I personally think, think that 17 spaces for, for, for 112 kids and 15 employees is, is too small.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
So what's your recommendation then between this, of the 17 to 27?
Well.
Or I guess you're saying?
The total of 46 for, for both parking lots with, with the shared parking agreement, that either building can use any of those 46.
So it wouldn't be with the building to the north. It would be with the owner of the parking lot.
Well, well, the parking lot is is on a separate lot. So I mean, if it's if it's with the owner and parking lot or with the building. Doesn't make any difference. It's it's who controls the parking spaces.
Right. Oh, shared parking, you're going to have to enter to be entered into regardless of of who controls that other those other spaces.
Right.
Why? Why weren't you able to get like an advisory or some sort of agreement ahead of time?
Can we, if I might interrupt, please, we haven't heard from the gentleman that would like to move this project forward. I think we need to provide him an opportunity to present the plan and present what he's got in mind. And then maybe continue our questioning.
Sure, I like that. Yeah, let's hear from everybody.
Yeah, I think a lot of your questions can be answered by the applicant as opposed to me.
Thank you. You answered a lot, though. I can't read the name.
Yeah, hello, this is this is Matt with Higher Ground. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. And Jim, thanks for the detailed analysis of the parking. You stole some of my thunder, but I'm sure we'll get into it a little bit more. I'm going to try sharing my screen here. Can you see my screen or not?
Yes, we can see it.
So you see the guidepost Montessori introductory slide?
We see a site.
We have, whatever you're sharing, it's up.
Okay, okay, thank you. I apologize for not being there. I meant to be there in person tonight. My flight got canceled this morning. And so Emily made a combination for me to present this virtually. So I apologize for any technical difficulties or disruptions that may cause. I want to just run through real quick, give you a brief overview of Higher Ground, our company, and then we can jump into the site plan, floor plan and elevations, things of that nature. And I, you know, I heard the discussion you were talking about. I think we can clarify some of the questions that you guys had. So again, my name is Matt with Higher Ground. Want to thank specifically Mary, who's been helping us through this whole process, scheduling meetings, getting us documents, accepting ours. She's been fabulous through this whole process. It's been a pleasure working with her. With me tonight, I have Bill Romberg from DTI Architects, who stood up at the podium a few minutes before. Stephanie, I think, may be there from Kim Lee Horn. She's our traffic engineer, so she can help with questions on traffic. And then our civil engineer may be listening in as well. He's not there in person. So Guidepost Montessori, you know, our mission is to basically empower, guide and nurture the independence of children. We have basically two two main brands. Higher Ground is the parent company, Higher Ground Education. And then under that, we have Guidepost Montessori, which is where we operate our infant daycare, toddler, elementary and middle schools. We also have Academy of Thought Industry, which expands into high school. We also have a very large online learning presence that was key, actually, you know, in the past recent years with COVID and everything that went on there. This facility that we're talking about specifically is a Guidepost Montessori. It'll be infant to children's house ages, so that basically encompasses infants around six months, your six months to six years old children. This is a slide example of a prepared environment of one of our classrooms. A lot of people may hear Montessori, but may not know exactly.
Changing.
Our prepared environment is very important to us. So everything from the size of the shelves to the height of the shelves, to where materials are placed, are specifically designed to advance the development skills of the children. And so we're very conscious of how we design the interior spaces. Some of that, you know, we're very concerned, a couple more photos with, you know, with natural light. And you'll see in the floor plan, we're adding a couple of windows and doors specifically for that reason. Some classrooms that don't have a lot of natural light. And again, going back to the prepared environment. We use very high end millwork quality finishes, millwork and finishes that we put into each of our facilities.
Matt, can you hear us?
Yes, yeah.
I just want you to know your slides aren't changing.
Oh, really?
It's okay. I think the real issue is your ask, but you can continue to provide us a brief history of who you are.
Okay, let me see. Show screen.
I think it's working now.
Working now. Okay. There we go. So this was the prepared environment slide. This was classrooms with natural light, high end millwork and things of that nature. Moving on to just higher ground as a growing global presence. We actually are super excited. We just opened our hundredth store or hundredth location in the US. It was actually ironically in Centennial, Colorado. So very coincidental, but we also have schools in Canada to the north. We're across the pond in Spain and France. We're also have some locations in China and we're actually very excited. We're looking at some opportunities in Puerto Rico most recently. So that's kind of globally. Locally, you know, we do have a big presence in Florida and we're making concerted effort to open more schools there. We have, you know, three or four open locations currently. And then, you know, we're looking to open this location. You know, pending a positive recommendation. We've looked at close in August of this year, and it usually takes nine to twelve months to get a project permitted, built and licensed. That Jim was speaking to a little bit licensing process. So, you know, we'd be looking for, you know, sometime next summer, early fall to open this facility would kind of be the overall timing. And we have other locations in Orlando that we're closing on soon, a second location in Palm Beach Gardens we're closing on. And then other deals in the pipeline for Hollendale Beach, St. Augustine, Coral Springs and everything. So we have a very good, trying to get a really good presence in Florida. And so we're very excited to be coming to your community as well. So let's get more into the meat of the proposal, actually. This is the site plan and maybe I'll, I'm going to skip over this slide. We'll come back to it because I think that's what most of the questions were about. I'll briefly touch, I think, on the floor plan and the elevations, and then we can come back to the site plan. So the floor plan, we're not changing anything to the exterior of the building. We're just changing the interior to meet the programmatic needs of, you know, our facility. And you can see here, we'll have two of the toddler infant classrooms and then three of the older age, two to five year old, two to six year old child's house classrooms. We are proposing, as I mentioned, some new windows on the southern exposure here. These not only outlook out onto the playground, but also give the needed light into these classrooms. We're also closing up a overhead door that is in this location and adding, you know, a door directly out to the playground space from this classroom. And, you know, to get additional light. The the main front entrance, which is basically near the other building to the north, is remaining as our main entrance and reception area there. The exterior of the building, again, we're not changing really the exterior of the building, the footprint or anything like that. But what we are proposing is, as you can see on these bottom two pictures, is new signage, of course, new wall signage. And then we're also proposing to repaint the upper fascia of the building from the white and blue colors to more of a neutral tone, which are more in line with our branding. Very minimal changes to the exterior. Obviously, any maintenance that's needed to the building, we typically power wash the entire building. We clean, you know, the whole building. Make sure it's, you know, a class A quality building once we're done and ready to open. I'll jump back to the site plan. I'll give just a general overview and then I'll try to address some of the comments or questions that you that you had. So like Jim said, you know, we're off of Forest Hill Boulevard, that we are part of a larger business park with three other multi-tenant retail buildings. And then specifically, we're talking about this, the parcel here, which is fifteen oh one Forest Hill, which is comprised of these two buildings. Part of our proposal is to, maybe hard to see on that screen, but it's converting this area here, which is currently like a roundabout with six parking spaces. We're converting that into playground space. That playground will be surrounded by, you know, a licensed, required mandatory fencing. We always typically do that six foot high aluminum picket style fence. Pretty attractive, very durable fencing around the playground. We are proposing to just remove the existing monument sign and install a new monument sign. And then the the main improvements are to reconfigure this part of the parking lot in front of the two buildings. Currently, the parking is all angled. And so what Bill and DTI was able to do is reconfigure it to perpendicular parking. There's some minor adjustments we have to make to the configurations, but what we're able to do is the six parking spaces that we lose by converting the playground, we're able to actually add back eight. So we're positive or net to two additional spaces. Now, like Jim said, that it's still short of the town's parking requirements, but as he was mentioning in the analysis. You know, we provided the IT data. And so we think, oh, you know, with those numbers and you know, we talked about, you guys were talking about the shared parking agreement, the shared parking agreement that we would be parked adequately. I think some of your questions in terms of, you know, ownership of the buildings versus the parking lot. So this heavy red line, you know, does represent our subject property is what we would be purchasing. So we would own and maintain the building and the parking lot. And similarly, this building to the north, it's actually a condominium, office condominium. And so there's three separate medical practices in that building. And so they own and maintain their their building and the parking to the north. And so that's why we're proposing and it worked out with staff to execute this shared parking agreement. The overall development, there's shared access drive. But we're not proposing shared parking with the other three subject buildings here. So the shared parking is just with the, you know, our immediate neighbors to the north. Jim did mention, and we do have a draft shared parking agreement that we put in front of the three neighbors to the north. One of the doctors has already signed the agreement. My understanding, the second of the doctors said, if all three sign, or if the other two sign, I'll sign. And then there's a third doctor who we're still working with. Coming to terms with final agreements, but we feel confident that we're going to be able to get to, you know, come to an agreement and execute this shared parking agreement. So obviously, I'll leave it at that. I think, you know, that's kind of a high level overview of the project, you know. As Jim said, we're asking for your recommendation or your approval. So that we can, you know, then move on to the next steps, which would be, you know, preparing CDs for the project. You know, completing the shared parking agreement, closing on the property, building and, you know, and so forth, the next steps. So I appreciate your time. I'm here. Bill is here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
My question was answered.
Me too. Me too. Any questions?
I just have one question. I am hopeful that you can get that shared parking agreement executed. Because to be honest, that was actually one of my big hangups to make sure that this is going to have adequate parking. But I think more than that, the traffic pattern, and I don't know if your name, I apologize. I wanted to make sure that the traffic flow. So currently, my son is in Montessori and it is, from what I understand, a very staggered approach. The Montessori that my son is actually attending or was attending during the school year has much fewer parking than what's being proposed here. And they seem to get along just fine. Parents are very nice. But have you thought about a traffic pattern?
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, for the record, my name is Stephanie Kinlan. I'm a professional engineer with Kim Lee Horn Associates. We worked on the site circulation plan as well as the the shared parking study where we went out and we did counts of the actual location to see what the the real world demand was. In terms of actual site circulation, because we will not have a designated, you know, pull around porta coche or drop off area. Parking drop off will be conducted primarily in those spaces immediately adjacent to the building. Based on other sites and other guidepost Montessori schools. We wouldn't anticipate more than during peak times, eight parents dropping off in a given time, at which point parents will park the vehicle. Take escort the child in and then drive off. They will primarily enter the site. Because there is only a shared access drive off of Forest Hill Boulevard, which is located immediately east of those buildings. They will enter through that shared access drive, at which point they will turn left into the site. And we'll be able to make an immediate left into those parking spaces before circulating back up through the exit.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sure.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the recommendations of staff for this line.
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion carries. Thank you all very much for your hard work on this project. Hopefully, we'll have another Montessori school here in Lake Clark Shores soon.
Thank you for all your time. Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate you selecting Lake Clark Shores as a future site for one of your schools.
Yeah, we're super excited to come and hopefully grow within the community.
We are as well.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to audience comments. Since we just discussed it. We'll start with is it Renee? Rena? Okay, come on up. Doctor, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
That's not surprising. Amro.
Amro.
Hi, I'm Dr. Rena Amro. I am the majority owner of that north building. So I'm the person in question here. I've been in this community nineteen years, as well as the two other physicians, one's a dentist, one's a physician, the other physician is sitting right there, Dr. Millian. Between the three of us, we've been in this community over forty years in that building. We have only been informed about this Montessori school within the last few weeks. There is no shared parking lot agreement. Our building is a separate entity from the south building. We have our own condo association. And I am the majority owner of the building as well as Dr. Millian there. I want to bring to everybody's attention that we did discuss with Dr. Reddy and Dr. Reddy's office about there is no shared parking lot agreement. We have in our condo docs, which is a survey certification, which is with our condo docs from two thousand and three. You know, that we clearly own the parking lot to the north of our building and half of the parking lot to half the parking lot as well that was in the site plan. Okay? At no time did Guidepost come to us and say, we're coming up with a site plan. We never approved. coming up with a site plan. We never approved it. We never consented to it. We never signed any kind of parking lot agreement. They are taking their lots and building a, they're building a playground. If you'd like this council, I'd be happy to give this to you. We don't consent to a parking lot agreement. I have elderly patients. I'm an orthopedic surgeon who have canes, who have walkers. Per the traffic expert, they say that the drop-off line is going to go straight through our parking lot and leave from the north side. My patients can't be walking across a parking lot in a walker, a crutch, a wheelchair, and get run over by the line. There's a hundred and seventeen kids in this school. When you look at their presentation, they estimate that their drop-off time is going to be from seven thirty to ten AM, seven thirty to ten AM. Pickup time is between two thirty and six PM. And that's in the presentation that council that you've reviewed. So that means that there's only going to be four hours where there's no traffic coming in off of Forest Hill Boulevard for drop-off and pickup. We have five buildings back there with one ingress and one egress. It's a very tight area. It doesn't even have a line, a double line down the road. We could barely get in and out with our own patients, much less, can you imagine the backup on Forest Hill Boulevard every morning coming in? And also, it's a safety issue. I mean, those two patients in 1511 who overdosed, how are your emergency vehicles going to get back there? If there's, if it's blocked up by the pickup line, blocked up by the by the drop-off line, and also all the tenants of five buildings, five buildings, one way in, one way out. So looking at the site plan, they plan to build a parking lot where where they are unable to get in and out. So they're going to come in through here, come out through the north side. There's no way they can do that without using our parking lot. We are not signing a shared parking lot agreement. We have not entertained one with them. We've discussed this with Dr. Reddy's office repeatedly. So I'm not sure how with a civil engineer, a parking expert that we just heard from, a also a civil, a civil engineer, a architect, that they were unaware that we own this parking lot. There's no third party that owns it. Our building owns it exclusively.
The good news is you control the destiny if you own, if you own that parking lot. So that's why I asked that question earlier.
As we should. We have an obligation to our patients not to put them in danger. I can't have patients come walking across a parking lot with a with a walker or a cane and get run over by drop-off and pickup. My other concern is the ingress and egress off Forest Hill Boulevard. It's going to be a backup. I have kids myself. I dread going in the drop-off line because it's going to take forty minutes. It's not a simple process. I know these children don't drive, but there's just no safe way to do this without using our parking lot. And we don't want to come to the point where we have to put a median, or we have to put a barrier in the middle of our parking lot so they don't come over to ours. We think that's ridiculous. We've been here a very long time serving this community, and we want to continue to do that. And we don't want to be pushed out. We don't want to be railroaded. We don't want to be manipulated by some big company that comes in and wants to take over our building. We've been there a very long time. We're all owners. We all occupy our units. This is our livelihood that we're talking about. Thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Is it Dr. Millian? Do you want to come up and speak?
Thank you. I'm Dr. Millian. I just want to add, they would have sixteen employees all the time. That means system parking lot to be filled by the employee. And there's nothing else as parking lot for them, but our parking lot. If you look at the divider within the building, the entrance of the three medical offices are there. Obviously, the traffic and the parking of the sixteen employees would be in this area hard for my patient, for her patient, to go to that. Thirdly, we have been informed, we have to share our insurance with them. If a kid has something, that we are liable. If a kid has something in the parking lot, we are liable. That's what they bring us as the agreement to sign. It's on the paper. I didn't sign it. Right now, we are not such thing. We are all medical offices. So that, that to be considered other liability, they put on the shoulder. So at that time, like Dr. Millian said, we have no shared parking agreement.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And y'all truly control your destiny here. Whatever, you know, that's, it's contingent upon y'all reaching an agreement. You don't reach an agreement.
And not to be clear, I want to be rude to push somebody against their own business, but yes, to be fair for all parties, they seem to be serving that, done or through their own project. No, there's a lot to swallow to accept this project.
You can do whatever you, y'all please, for sure.
Thank you.
No, thank you, doctor. Appreciate y'all being longstanding members of this community.
Have you seen a, hey, doctor, have you seen the recommendation of staff?
No, we have nothing.
All right, here you go. I don't want you to do any necessarily any.
This is the last page.
This is the last page. Okay, so everything was contingent upon meeting staff's recommendations.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Very informative. You know, I like the rest of the story.
Were there any other audience comments on that topic? Yes, Ashkar, yes.
And then Ashokul Kalini, eighty-one thirty-one West Lake Drive. What I was going to tell you, I changed my mind because initially, the consultant who did presentation for almost half an hour, we were totally in the dark because by doing so, they should have put the map or something on the screen, which happened later on. So we got some idea. You know what I'm saying? So anybody who, I'm delegating architect and planner myself, I never presented something that nobody knows what exactly going on. And the drawings are very critical. And I treated myself, they're talking between him and you, and we had no clue what was going on until it came on the screen. So all I'm suggesting, anytime something like this happen, audience must know what is going on. You know, it's part of Lake Clark Show scheme. That is all my suggestion. And I changed my mind. What I was going to tell you exactly happened except half an hour later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. See here. Breaking on residential lot. Mr. Daughtry. I think you submitted your inquiry initially.
Yeah.
Or first, from what I could tell, you want to talk about code enforcement and water and sewer.
Yeah.
Tim Daughtry, fourteen-ten Keller Road. So I was violated for two things on June second. Here's the, what was left on my floor, between six-thirty and nine o'clock at night. You can't read it. You have no idea what's on there. It's indecipherable, other than the fact that I noticed on one of the violations was, which was not a life safety issue. I had one day to correct when we're staring a tropical storm right in our face, which was that weekend and everything else. And I did clean up the stuff in the first page of that the very next day in a driving rainstorm, you know, to correct things that Dana wanted.
I don't know what the violation was for.
Okay, well, you won't not, you won't know from reading it. Okay, that's the problem. Okay? You can't read it. I had one day to correct it. Okay?
Okay. What was the issue?
I made phone calls to Dana two times. That's ten days ago, and I still haven't received a com call back. Okay, so that's a concern for me. You know, I have a code enforcement issue that I want to correct in my house. There's also an issue with a piece of fascia there. She wants me to paint, but I have a roof construction project in process. I'm eighteen thousand dollars in, and I've still got more to go. Again, I wanted to discuss that with Dana. Two phone calls to her, no response. Okay, I don't know what's said. Okay. It's concerned to me that that's how I was cited on that day with one day to correct. Okay, that's how I was cited, one day to correct that, and you can barely read that stuff. Okay? If that's the way we're doing code enforcement these days, it's concerning me.
It's pretty legible. It says complaint, constant, open storage of miscellaneous, which is abbreviated, items in front of garage section thirty-four dash twenty.
One day to correct.
Please remove all storage items. Thank you.
One day.
But I don't see an issue with the legibility of it.
Okay, well.
Unpainted area on trim of residence section thirty-four dash twenty. Lieutenant Fisher, please paint. Thank you.
Okay, but I made two phone calls to her to discuss these issues with her. She's never called me back ten days later.
But this is not legible to you?
I didn't consider that legible when it was given to me. But, you know, I mean, you know, there you go. It's hard to read, very hard to read. Okay, so that's the one thing. Okay, so. A second thing, you brought this up earlier. Michael asked, when will we be getting the plans for that? Okay, it's been a while since they've been working on these plans. And I'm concerned how long this is dragging, okay, for final plans on this, so we can make some decisions going forward. It's a concern for me because I don't think we're going to be able to get funding until we do have final plans on some of these, some of these phases in the sewer project. I would like some sort of timeline when the plans are going to be finalized, so we can have some idea of what the cost may or may not be going forward. And I honestly think, and based on what I've seen at county, when I've been up there for the discussions with Water Bond, they want some specificity before they allow money to come to any type of project that would be part of any type of water bond there. Okay, they've been, the commissioner's been very adamant about that. I think the state's been very clear about that, too, that money, money, if it's going to be distributed to us or allowed to us, we're going to need plans. So I'd like to see some sort of timeline where we would know when these plans are going to be finalized somewhat, so that we can continue to go and have discussions about this.
Sure.
Okay, and and then I think once we do have the plans, I think we should have a workshop where residents get to share their views about this going forward, too, at that point in time. Once we get to a more specific point where we can look at dollars and cents, and how it's going to be phased and everything else. And I think it's something that we owe it to our residents to do. Okay? And then the third thing is, recently, I saw in a post on the website about treating weeds and algae in our canals. Okay, so we're talking about impaired lake here. Okay? And when we're going to be treating weeds in our canals, we're talking about killing the weeds. Okay, and specifically, we're talking about putting poisons on them. Okay? How can we be good stewards of our environment? If we are going to be putting more poisons to a lake that's already impaired? Okay, I think we really owe it to ourselves to look at other
We have, by the way, for many years.
Excuse me?
We have looked at alternatives for many years.
Okay. And we should be promoting other ways that are more environmentally friendly to take care of our yards and take care of our watershed here. Okay, I mean, there's lots of different things that we can promote, and we can propose zero escapes. We can be promoting proposals where we have rain barrels available for people who can collect rainwater from their houses for irrigation. We can promote Florida natural yards, which require no irrigation whatsoever, or no pesticides, or no fertilizer. Okay, I mean, we just had recently, last month, there was a proposal called No Mow May, where people didn't mow their grasses for an entire month of May to promote environmentally conscious ways of taking care of our lawns and then in turn our watershed. Okay, and I think we need to be looking at not just septic sewer conversion. We need to look at the whole of this whole process. Okay, because a lot of this is runoff going into lake that's impairing the lake. And we need to be looking at everything, A to Z.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And we have been looking at everything. So your wish has been granted many times over for a long time. Okay. Mr. Clark, can you give us an update on the water bond since it was discussed?
I don't know that the county's done anything else. I had a phone call today from Kim Miller with Palm Beach Post, asking about some of the issues that we raised at the last Board of County Commission meeting in response to the water bond. She indicated to me that she thought it was coming up for discussion next week.
It is.
But
Can you, can you allow Mr. Clark to finish talking? I just wanted to know, can you, can you just allow Mr. Clark to finish talking?
So it's, we should be getting new information next week. From what I understand, none of the board members have changed their mind. So I'm not sure how this will move forward or if it will move forward.
Thank you very much.
So Paul, just to follow up on that, I talked to her, and then I followed up with David Kerner's office today, and the water bond issue is on the agenda for a workshop on this coming Tuesday. Okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I noticed we have some residents and folks sitting on the floor. I'd like to invite you to sit on a chair if you feel so inclined.
Yeah, we got some open space here. I don't know, about eight, ten chairs. You don't have to sit on the floor. Okay. All right. Move on to Mr. Hansel. Is he still here? I think I saw him leave. No? Want to talk about the pavilion rental? Anything going on with the pavilion rentals? They're up and running, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, hey. Yes, ma'am. You want to talk about pavilion rentals?
Well, it's sort of like, I'm Carol Hassel, seven zero five, etc. It's more about the noise from there. And I, we spoke about the decibels and all that one time. Councilman Chauvin, and the decimal thing didn't really work. And I was wondering if you were going to change the ordinance to say no amplified music, because no loud music really doesn't cut the mustard over there. I confronted the lady several years ago about it. And she said, oh, the music's not loud. The wind is just blowing into your house. And I heard it two blocks over. So everybody's
Strong wind.
Yeah. Of what loud music is different. So the officer mannequin kind of mentioned, well, what about, because they have amplifiers over there with their parties and microphones, and the people are talking on the microphones and yelling. And and it's something that goes on from like noon or one until dark during summer. It's an all-day annoying thing. We put an impact slider door on our patio backside of the house, and it has helped. It was very expensive to do that. So in our house isn't so bad, but I still hear it outside, and I'm two blocks away. And the parking situation, when we walk, we walk to to the restaurants on Sunday night, up on Forest Hill, and we cut through the park. And the other night, we couldn't, a golf cart couldn't have got on the golf cart. They had cars parked the whole way up, triple parked all the way. There was no way to get through there. And if anybody else wants to use, you know, the park for tennis or whatever, there's, there's no parking. But I just wondered, since I had talked with Mr. Chauvin about the noise issue, if there was anything that would be changed about the ordinance for the noise, and the boat ramp as well.
This is the first I've heard of it. So I don't, I can't talk to any of the guys up here outside of
But I tell you what we can do, Carol, is, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
I know there's certain other provisions of the code that are demanding our review. And I'll look to Mr. Clark and the chief to take a look at this also.
And it does say no large gatherings over there. And I don't know what's considered large. It doesn't say that on the, you know, pavilion reservation form.
Go ahead.
Was this the event that was happening under the pavilion?
Or The rent, yeah, they, it's the same company that people hire. They put the balloons up. It's usually a one-year birthday party, a fifteen-year. I mean, every year, there's always a
I think this is a rehearsal dinner Sunday. Wedding rehearsal.
There was, that that looked more like a wedding
Yeah, and and they started pretty early, like around eleven o'clock, they were going. And you're saying at six o'clock at night, they're still going?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, that.
And when we came back from Sushi Joe's, it was still going. I have video.
That might be something we have to address, because I thought there was a timeline.
I thought there was, too. What, you said, I want to go back to the noise decimal thing. Did the machines not work or something, or?
Uh, well, first of all, when you, when you call Palm, I was told by, when Tom May sat up with you guys, this has been going on for years with us, um, was told there was, if you want the noise to stop, you need to call the police department. They'll come over and tell them to shut it down. So I call Palm Springs on the weekend now, the non-emergency line. You get a recording. You can't even talk to anybody to try to get an officer to come over to, to turn the music down. Um, so I don't know, am I supposed to call the emergency line to do that? I don't think that's proper. But the non-emergency line for Palm Springs, you get a recording on the weekend if, if you, and you can't talk.
I wasn't aware of that.
Call nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Seriously, call nine-one-one.
I'm nervous.
Palm Springs.
I used to work in ER. I don't really feel like that's an emergency issue.
Palm Springs changed their system and that's how we get in the system and that's how we get, uh, a record.
It's going to be the same officers arriving regardless, right?
I agree.
So I mean, if, if you have an issue, if that's the, the way to get, you shouldn't be calling somewhere and getting a voicemail. I, I don't, I don't think that's right. So, I mean, it sounds odd, uh, counterintuitive, but if that's how you got to get a hold of them.
Well, there, um, excuse me, there's numbers and if you, if you dial the number and hit one, you go to dispatch, right? Should go to dispatch. It's, uh, a lot of cities have, uh, gone to that because of staffing, where, where you go through if you want certain things. But if you dial the number and push one, you go directly to, uh, dispatch. And the, uh, sound meter, I just purchased a, a brand-new sound meter to, uh, help us in, uh, issuing notice. And, and we have, we have issued notices and we have, uh, done reports where we told people to break it up or cut it out or lessen the noise. So we have been doing that because I get the complaints on the other end. So I. Is that the application you have in your hand? Is that the?
Yes.
Can I see that for a minute? Because I, I was always concerned about how long you were allowed.
You shouldn't be parking on it. You shouldn't have cars parking on it.
But the application says no loud music allowed, must comply with town noise ordinance.
Yeah, I was curious if that's what she was saying, or if they were just blocking the parking.
Cars, the cars were parked on the.
No, they weren't on the car.
They were just in the parking lot blocking the path.
Nobody could go on the car.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
But there is no timeframe on here. But I'm wondering if there, if there is a timeline and we should probably talk about that because that's a long party.
Our parks close at dark and that's typically what we expected from rentals, is they would go until dark.
Okay.
Was it like, was the sun down? It was dark when you came back from Sushi Joe?
Uh, we go like quarter to six and we're walking home by seven fifteen, seven thirty. What?
So it's still a little light out?
Dusky, yeah. It was, it was still a little.
Are you still having these problems after, I mean, provided you appreciate the time of it? But are you still having these noise issues after dark?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, for me.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Clark, is there a certain number of people that the pavilion can actually, like, the occupancy rate?
No.
Okay.
So park.
Yeah, as an open structure, it doesn't have an occupancy limit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get the, Carol, did you, uh, do the decibel app on your phone yet?
We discussed that and that one of the officers said that they stood by a place and the decimal, decimal was useless, basically. I, I don't think that's a, a problem.
I'll talk to Deputy Chief Sal.
Yeah, a lot of times, and I've said this before, it's the base, which doesn't really register on the decimal, because it's just, it's a feeling. It doesn't, it's not loud. It's just inside. And, and that's the unfortunate. We can sit there with the decimal meter all the time and we've been using the new one. The readings are very comparable to some of the phone ones, but they're more accurate. And the problem is the base.
I think there's a song about that.
I know.
I think it's all about the base.
When we address it, most people, you know, they're pretty compliant and they apologize and they'll turn it down. And you'll just dump back up a, a little bit. But the music itself isn't always loud and sometimes it's the, the type of music.
Mm-hmm. Or the songs sometimes are recorded louder than others.
Yeah.
As a former DJ.
That's, that's the issue.
I can have video. I can send you audio and video.
Sure.
Send it to the chief.
Oh, no, no.
He actually likes that music, I think.
All right, thank you very much. Um. Bill. Bill Murphy.
I have been cited rightly so, but I'm.
Well, hold on, hold on, can I come to the, yeah?
William Murphy, eighteen forty-one Evergreen Drive. I was unaware that we had an ordinance that is so restrictive to trailers on properties that I was cited for. I am here to say we like our toys. I need trailers for the toys. And you need to re, relook at this ordinance. Because it, you know, if I get a jet ski and a boat and a sailboat, I need three trailers. If I have a travel trailer and a, another travel trailer, then I'm so would please look at your ordinance and work on that.
Sure, that's actually the, the topic for the next two, um, uh, people who want to talk. So we'll be, I'm sure we'll be discussing it in more detail here in a moment.
Thanks.
Thank you. Same answers. We'll go, um, Robert Lament. I apologize. I don't think I pronounced your last name properly. I couldn't read it. Lamellus. Mr. Lamellus, welcome. If you could introduce yourself and your address, please.
Yeah, my name, excuse me, my name is Robert Lamellus and I live at eighteen twenty Cambodian Road. Been there for over thirty years. And the first I heard of this ordinance was today when I got cited through it. Now, I've been here thirty-plus years. I've never heard of this ordinance or this code or even being enforced. I took a quick glance at it and utility trailers were put in mind. My thing now, it doesn't, boat trailers, this and that. I don't know the definition of the councils of a utility trailer, of a regular trailer, of a boat trailer, recreational trailer. I mean, that's a broad, and if you look at it, it doesn't really give you a lot of answers. Now, what I was cited for was a utility trailer. So what I'm looking at, to me, it's an antiquated code that hasn't been, if it's been on the books, I, I would say fifteen years. I've been here thirty-one, maybe thirty-two now. Never been enforced, never seen it. Now, you, you're consid, your constituents here and the residents of Lake Clark Shore, me being a business owner in West Palm Beach, which I formerly sold, and me being a resident here, this is just a little tip of the iceberg here with the people that are showing up here. Because there's a, a lot more people, hundreds, that have the multiple trailer. Not just a half a dozen that are here, because this was late, late notice. And I was driving back from Volusia County, which I wasn't going to stop here, but I bought some property in Volusia County also. And I came straight to the meeting because I was like, this is not fair. And like I said, it's hundreds and hundreds of people, because I've been in the, in the area doing bait and tackle for a long time.
What was the, um, condition you were cited for? We can better appreciate what you're talking about.
More than one utility, utility trailer stored on property.
Okay, and how many do you have?
Well, is a boat considered a utility trailer? Because I have offshore boat. I have been in a coastal boat. I have a lake boat. You know what I mean? That, to me.
Well, I agree. The code is, is very unique, uh, as it currently stands.
Now, a utility trailer, I have, what, I have a Jeep on a trailer. Is that considered a utility trailer? Or is it, is it a car trailer? Now, I have one utility trailer on the property, which I, I mean, I, it's on eBay. I don't, you haven't used it in a long time. But it's neither here nor there. Give me twenty days, it'll probably be gone. But I'm, I'm not here just for myself.
Nice.
I'm here for all the residents. You, I mean, your constituents are boaters, you're there. Because if you up and down the road, you can see hundreds of trailers. And it's not one, it's multiple on people's property, which this is why we live here in Lake Clark. I mean, to take advantage of a little open property in the back, but nine times out of ten, these people's yards are fenced. You know what I mean? So what would it really make a difference now? Somebody's looking over my fence. How, how is, that's invasion of my property, invasion of my privacy. So, I mean, I'm here just to voice a little, oops, sorry, voice a little bit of opinion for hearing all my fellow people. I mean, I, I'm not the oldest resident here and I've been here the longest, but I've been here my fair share. The world is changing. I know that. I think some of the codes need to be changed, too. Because this, to me, this world is going crazy. You had the COVID, you had the pandemic, you had this, you had that. There's no things on the shelves and people worried about a couple trailers that are sitting behind somebody's yard. This is what we pay our taxes for? I mean, to me, it's just a little bit outreach, a little bit overboard. I mean, I would hope the council and you mayor would take advice and look at some of this. And like I said, if you tell a bunch of people, because like I said, last-minute meeting, I guarantee you this whole place will be full. And there'll be a lot of people that will not be happy.
No, I've already received calls about it.
Okay, so.
That's why I was, that's why I was asking you, like, what was your specific situation?
And I was, my son called me because we got a violation on our door. I said, for what? And that's what it was. I said, what? So I just, like I said, the first I heard of it was today. I didn't get in till two thirty, three o'clock.
No problem. I appreciate you coming here.
But thank you very much for hearing me.
Paul, I'd like to make one comment.
Please.
Just want to say, thank you for coming up here and saying this. We are here to help as your council members. I, I get what you're saying. I mean, I get it. I'm a lawyer and I'm reading it, trying to figure it out. So we're going to do something about it, hopefully tonight. But I want all the residents to know that, you know, when something like this comes up, you can talk to us. We're reasonable. We're all residents up here. And I, I think there's nothing crazier than to be cited for something of that nature, given that you've lived here for thirty-two years and didn't even know it. And you can't quite figure it out. So thank you.
Like I said, I, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I apologize.
No, no, I'm just saying thank you. I'm glad that you were willing to say that. I want anyone who will come up.
And I would have loved, and if, if I knew about this before, my, my child, I mean, I would have called or say, hey, can I have an appointment just, just to speak with somebody? Because it, it's always nice to speak. And if, you know, if there's a feud with a neighbor and another neighbor, I could understand that. But you don't take hundreds of people and involve a feud with a neighbor with a neighbor, take hundreds of people and then have them all suffer for, you know what I mean, for the Hatfields, Hatfields and McCoy battle? That, to me, is not a very good way of doing it. That's why when I heard about it, I had to speak. I had another previous engagement over here, but I thought this was important for all the residents here in, in the town.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If I may, you, you very humbly, uh, mentioned, uh, your business. Uh, for those of you that don't know, for many years, you had Berto's Bait and Tackle, probably one of the most unique, coolest bait and tackle shops, uh, that West Palm has probably ever seen. So thank you for all of your years of, of service and, um, you know, friendship and, and time to, to hang out and talk about fish stories over there. So when some of you in the, in the audience, uh, you know, were hearing about the boats, sometimes you need an offshore boat, sometimes you need an inshore boat, and sometimes you need a lake boat because you're really into fishing and you're into boating. So thank you so much for coming up.
Thank you, gentlemen, for listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rivera, Lionel Rivera? Or Leonel? Getting difficult names today. Hi, welcome. Could you state your name, please, and, and your address?
My name is Leonel Rivera. I'm at nineteen hundred Carissa Road. I'm sure a lot of you guys heard about my bounce house company. So I'm here about the trailer situation as well. I, I live off of my business is what I do. Uh, I got all my paperwork with you guys straightened out. Everything is up to date with, uh, tax receipts and I obviously operate trailers. I have three on my property. Um, for me, it's my livelihood. Uh, a lot of people, you know, they have different kinds of trailers, like Mr. Robert was mentioning. And, you know, just because my neighbor is Mr. Clem and Ms. Louise aren't happy with me, it doesn't mean that everybody else has to suffer for, you know, for what's, what they're complaining about, you know? They mentioned a few months ago that they were going to do everything possible to shut me down. Then they go around saying that that's not the case. I mean, they're messing with my business and, I mean, with this letter, they're messing with my family as well. I just, I don't.
You get? I don't know. What is it?
I've never sent you anything. Never give it. Never talked to you. Need to take it to the mayor. He'll take it from you.
I'm listening.
So I'm here in front of all of you guys. I, I need a resolution. I don't know. Am I breaking the law? Am I not breaking the law? Is this being enforced? Is it not being enforced? And also, I would like to have the same opportunity that they have to have a meeting with you guys. With all, with all the council members that, that would.
Are open to hear, hear me and my family, my wife.
Sure.
So at this point, I just don't know what to do. I don't want to get in trouble. I don't want, I don't want to break the law. I'm trying to be as safe as possible running my business and being productive.
Or did you receive citations to do it today as well?
Yes, for the trailers.
Mayor, may I just ask?
Sure.
Uh, I think we definitely want you to support your family. I mean, there's nothing greater. I mean, you know, I'm certain we're working hard to get your business up. We're not here to break it down. So hopefully we'll come up with some sort of way to deal with this. And I'm glad you came in to talk to us. Don't just come in whenever you have a problem. Come in.
Of course.
Anytime for questions. I mean, I, I, I know a lot of people work hard in this town, doing small businesses. And the last two years have been really hard, probably for you, the bounce house business, we've been very good during COVID. Who wants kids bouncing around each other? Um, but I'm glad that you're working hard at it. Honor your business, but also come up with.
A way to honor your business, but also come up with a way to, you know, resolve these code issues and see what makes sense.
Of course, so that's why I'm here. I just, I want to get, I want to have my voice heard as well. And, um, it's just, it's very frustrating.
Well, I appreciate that. There, there are issues with, um, that whole trailer section of the code. Multiple issues from my perspective that need to be addressed. Um, from how they're, you know, what's considered a, a trailer, what's an RV, what's a camper? What's a utility trailer? And how many you can have to how they can be stored. So, uh, I definitely think this is an opportunity for the council to take some action to provide some clarity to the residents and, and ultimately do what is best for those in our community. I mean, over thirty years, this really hasn't even been an issue.
Yeah.
Uh, until recently. So we're going to work on it up here and discuss it in, in greater length in a few minutes.
I really appreciate it. Just like Mr. Robert, he's been here thirty years. I've been here almost three. And, um, we're the young, the young guys here hoping to stay with the committee for a long time. I don't, I'm not going to get ran off by my neighbors.
All right, thank you.
Um, if, if I, if we can, I don't know what I have to do, set up a, a meeting with you guys or?
We, you stick around while we set up a meeting when, uh, we're done here.
Okay.
All right, if you, everyone, if you're concerned about this issue, certainly stick around, because I, I would like the council to discuss it during council comments. You know, what we can do, what our thoughts are, what the issues are that we each perceive, so that we can figure out a, a direction to go. Okay?
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Does anybody else have a question, Mr. Rivera?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brandenburg, yes?
This was not just an issue about the trailers with Mr. Rivera. This was about the Florida statutes and the laws provided by the state of Florida for home-based businesses. Mr. Rivera was not operating within the laws of the state of Florida. Just so happened that the trailers were part of the codes of the law of the state of Florida. Mr. Rivera submitted a application for, uh, tax receipt. Mr. Rivera, how do I put this? Oh, omitted the fact of what he is doing with his business and the kind of business. He listed one bounce house on that application. Okay, I've been before the count, the city or the town. I've given you my photos. Again, it's not just a trailer issue. It's, he's not obeying the Florida law. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hassel. Wait, I apologize. Anyone have any questions or comments from Ms. Brandenburg?
Yes.
Okay. No.
Were you waiting?
Oh, I'm so sorry, ma'am. I, the people are filling out these cards. I'm just going by the cards and then I was going to ask. I think this will be real quick, if Mr. Hassel's come on up and then ask, you have a question for the chief about the speed signs?
But I wouldn't want you to just say, how do you know a speed hump is working? People complain about it. Uh, chief, I have a question. The speed signs on Westlake. I live at seventy-two oh five, I can clearly see the sign from my yard. And I would say eighty percent of the cars that I see go down, uh, northbound on Forest Hill. The lights flashing right away, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty plus. I'm curious about, uh, your statistics. Do the signs record the, um, is, how's the data recorded? Is it the first level of speed, is it taking over a three-second period and averaged? Is it when they get to the sign?
It's, uh, it's average.
Average.
And it's, uh, it's, 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 so let's say if you're, it's around the clock. So that's gonna, uh, uh, make the percentages maybe different. But, uh, I think ninety percent of the vehicles that are checked, and even with the new ones that we just put up on Pine Tree, shows that ninety percent of the people are complying. Uh, with the speed limit, you, you are gonna have people speed, we write speeding tickets. If there are complaints, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, set up and use laser or radar. But, um, the statistical information has been ninety percent, ninety percent.
So when it records, for statistical, when it records the speed of a car, is it when the car first records? Or is it over a two or three second period? Because a lot of cars will be twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and when they see the flash, they'll slow down, down to twenty-five. So is that when it's measuring? That's, because I, I would say eighty percent of the cars are speed.
Yeah. Well, the, the way that it's set up when it flashes, it's twenty-five and then anything over, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, it's gonna flash to, to slow you down. The, the statute won't let us write tickets for five over. What we're interested in is people that are going ten, fifteen, and twenty over. So, and those numbers, you know, we can, I can break it down and give you how many there is on that. And, um. I think that having the, the speed signs up and flashing, even though statistics, you know, with statistics, you can debate them all the time. Uh, I think it's, it's done a great job slowing traffic down. And Palm Springs did a survey and they, they went ahead and they purchased a couple of them to put in some areas. And I talked with the chief, they'd been up for, I'd say about three weeks, and he was impressed and the people were happy on, uh, Greenbrier and.
Well, I would say, a lot of the people that, when it starts flashing, say they're doing twenty-seven, twenty-four, they do slow down. But what I hear you saying is because of the law, the five mi, it's not actually saying they're going twenty-seven. It's recording them that they're not going five miles over the limit. Is that correct?
No.
The statistics are gonna, gonna show anything over twenty-five. And, and, um, it'll, it'll break that down so you can see what the percentage is. We may not be inter, we're interested in anybody going for speed limit. But, uh, what we would be interested in is, uh, it gives us the date and the time. And we can take the day and the time, and that's when we've been doing traffic enforcement. And last month, we wrote about fifty, fifty citations for stop signs and speeding. And, um, yeah, you know, some people were on a thousand, but, uh, um, we've stepped up enforcement. COVID, you know, when we had COVID, we didn't do a lot of traffic and, and, and almost all the police departments weren't doing traffic. The court systems weren't set up, they weren't taking traffic. So, uh, it was just for critical, for riding. COVID is pretty much over, and so you're seeing more contact. And, and you're gonna see more contact on the interstate and, uh, with other police departments. But, I mean, you've noticed when you don't enforce the law, uh, being on the interstate, when you're, when we had COVID, people were just driving crazy speeding and stuff. But, uh, I'd say ninety percent of the people that come through the town, uh, are very good about obeying the speed limit. And that would be twenty-five and under. But the statistical thing, you can break it down. Number, what we were interested in is the day and, 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 and the hours. Now, in the morning. We don't have too much of an issue because the traffic gets backed up, so it's hard for people to speed, usually during the day. And then in the evening, it'll go up. And most of the traffic violations, I believe, in the evening, I'd have to check. Yes, the three-to-eleven shift. And they, they'd been writing a lot of the citations.
But, but the, if I so desire, those statistics would be available as far as a breakdown?
Yeah, well, I'm, I don't have a lot of staff, but I mean, if whatever you're interested in, if you let me know what you're interested in.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to share them. But as anybody knows with statistics and the manager, who's an engineer, um, helped us set these things up, you know? And I, I wanted it to go thirty and above, and he said, no, let's do it anything over twenty-five. And which paid off on the statistics, because we can still see if there's an issue. So it's, it's good technology, you just have to know how to manipulate it and use it as far as enforcement. But the, the stats are there and they're there for anybody to look at.
I don't think we answered your question, though, and we'll get that answer. We'll get that answer for you.
All right. Ma'am, in the, in the back, I. You come up here and just state your name and address? And thank you for your patience.
Good evening, of course, my name is Rita Jordan, and I reside at eighty-one hundred Westlake Drive. Um. I am the person who personally contacted Mr. Dan Clark before the moratorium requesting the second speed hump. That is now paused. And, um, did so because I have, we had over a dozen neighbors here tonight that I'm speaking on behalf of. I'm part of the generation that was here and was in, uh, Lake Clark shores when we knew not to speed in Lake Clark shores. But Lake Clark shores had the reputation that if you did so, you would be cited. Even the vendors who would visit the homes to service the homes knew that. I'm afraid those days are long gone, though. Um, we're certain that we need some traffic calming strategies. We're kind of blown away by the notion that there's no speeding in Lake Clark shores, as was reported in the last council meeting. And, um, I want to shortcut what I was intending on saying. And I am, we support the moratorium. We just want to ensure that the data that is going to be used to make decisions is as accurate as possible. For example, data was quoted in the last meeting that there was one hundred and one thousand four hundred and forty-two drivers on Westlake and Pine Tree. And, um, that the average of the speed was twenty-one miles per hour. So we have to realize that Pine Tree already has speed bumps. So that is gonna affect that data and the speed, for example. Also, our concern is the radar sign vehicle that is on the south side of Westlake is right before an almost ninety-degree curve. So everyone's gonna slow down, of course, for that. To go twenty-one miles per hour, the average, would be dangerous to make that turn. Not to take, and it also doesn't take into account the cars that are turning at the stop sign to go to Waterway and out to the Flamingo, uh, Florida Mango exit. And that's a substantial amount of cars that aren't getting counted by that, by that device. So we're, we want to request that, if possible, those devices get relocated. And we're happy to host them in our yards where it's before that sign. Because the truth is, there is a lot of traffic that's exiting this back exit to Florida Mango that's not getting counted. And we also want to, um. Say that, you know, the chief reported that ninety percent of the drivers are compliant and ten percent aren't. Ten percent, ten percent is a very large number. Um, and it doesn't jive with the amount of tickets that are being written. Um, it would be very easy for us to sit outside our yard and to find, to find five cars that are going over thirty-five miles an hour. On Westlake before the stop sign that's going to the exit, before the device that's, that's, uh, measuring the drivers. Very easy for us. Um, a statement was made that we are looking through our living room windows and assessing the speed of drivers. That's not true. We're pedestrians on the street, walking our paths, playing with our children and talking to our neighbors. We want to feel safe. We really do. So, um, I would ask that you'd consider relocating those devices if, in fact, you're gonna use the data from those devices as a part of your decision-making process. We think, we feel like that's just and fair.
Have, have any of the police officers posted up in your driveway or your immediate neighbors adjacent to you, say, within a few houses? To, but they're, you know, basically write tickets, see if there are any speeders and write tickets. I don't specifically appreciate where eighty-one hundred Westlake is.
That's okay, um, I'm about five, six. Sorry?
Well, yeah, I know, she lives down the street from me, I'm just trying to, I just don't count houses by address.
I'm nineteen fifty-eight, yeah, yeah, I'm about seven houses north.
Yes, yes. Okay, understood. Got it. Those color, those colorful doors will, will leave an imprint.
Not anymore.
Yeah, yeah, it got faded, yeah. Okay.
So, um, you know, we understand that there's an, there are, um, there's some research that needs to be done. And we ask that we don't just do internet searches, that you're gonna be able to find easily reports that support any position. You're gonna find companies that sell these radar devices and they're gonna tell you why all the, all the reasons why speed bumps don't work. And you're gonna find companies that sell speed bumps that are gonna tell you all the reasons why these, these signs don't work. And we understand the reasons, you know, their cost, the speed bumps are costly to maintain. There's the delays in the emergency responses, et cetera, and we don't want to ignore those points. What we want is to understand why every city utilizes them. And yet, there's no policy to ban them. You know, and, and if it's not good for Lake Clark, or Westlake, it's not good for Pine Tree. And so we ask that as you make the decisions and do your planning, that you are consistent and congruent. Um, we really feel like enforcement is, is a really strong way to go. I was concerned when a statement was made in the last meeting that I know, I quote, no one wants to hear this, but. And we're, we're wondering, why would no one want to hear that? That enforcement should be considered. We believe that we shouldn't have to request, but to request enforcement, that it should be required. You know, um, to put it a different way, you know, enforcement should be required, not a request. I, I think I should make T-shirts. So, um, that's where we're coming from, we want to work together. We want to do the right thing, we don't care about who's right, we would just want to do what's right. And we thank you for being here, hoping that that is where you're coming from. And, uh, appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here. Any questions or comments on that, or we can save it for council comments?
They chose a good spokesperson.
Yes. Yeah. That's what I'm thinking. So, Tony Sacco. Welcome.
Hi, Tony Sacco, seventy-three oh five, Pine Tree Lane. Um, you kind of addressed my question at the beginning, um, about the, uh, comment that DeSantis had approved monies for the septic-to-sewer.
Yes.
She actually didn't.
Correct.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to read it, a lot of people rely on social media for information. What you had posted was, good evening, neighbors, I have fantastic news to share. With more details to follow, Governor DeSantis was presented with the budget last night, he signed into law today. All Lake Clark shores projects were included. This includes the appropriation request for Pine Tree Bridge, the proposed plan for Phase Two Mica West of Septic Conversion Project, pickleball court. And the town's local related, the town's local bill related to the enclave of, um, of Florida Mango. I'm assuming these are official statements that you make, that you post?
I mean, they come from me.
But they're, assuming they're official statements representing the town. And I think it should be corrected because a lot of people get their information from this.
Sure. I'd be more than happy to address that.
Because I.
I also didn't include the, uh, pickleball funding in there. But that's in, that's a part of what was.
Yeah, in, in, in another post after that, you had said that, um, there was a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred. Uh, monies included for the pickleball courts, six hundred thousand for the Pine Tree Bridge. That's now diverted to the septic-to-sewer conversion. And, um. I just think the record should be corrected, this, because a lot of people commented on that, saying, you know, congratulations, DeSantis, congratulations, Lake Clark shores. We're getting all this money for the septic-to-sewer when we're actually not.
We still got six hundred grand we're gonna be able to use to work, but I have no problem addressing that.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Who was it that, um, misinformed you?
My lobbyist, our lobbyist.
Who was that?
Richard Pinsky.
Okay, so how did that, how, I mean, how did he not, I mean, he's a lobbyist, he should, should have known that, right?
My understanding was he misread something. And I specifically asked him about that project. He gave me that specific information, otherwise I would not have, uh, made a statement about it. And I relied on what my conversation was with him at that time and within, I don't know. How much time passed, less than an hour, I shared the information.
Online?
But that's.
You shared it online?
Yes. That's how that came about.
Yeah, I, I never, I didn't, I missed that, where was that?
You, you just read it?
No, you never, you never corrected the statement that.
No, 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 I didn't find out about that till like a week later. I didn't find out, oh, I don't know how many days it was.
Right, because I, because I actually asked you online, I asked you the question, was there money? That DeSantis approved for the septic-to-sewer conversion, but you'd never answered it.
I, I apologize, I don't recall seeing that.
It was the only comment to your comment.
Okay. I don't recall seeing that. I don't monitor social media in that fashion.
Right, but they are official statements.
They are. And my number and my name and my email are all public record for you. You can reach out to me directly and call me if you don't get a response. Those are the best ways to communicate with me. And I've advised many, many times that that is the best way to talk to me. So I have no problem, you want me to fix it, I'll go online, I'll see your comment and I'll reply to it. But that is not, when I do that, I'm not trying to engage in conversations, right? I'm not trying to go back and forth with whomever wants to engage on that topic. I am advising and providing as much information as I can, because I want to advise all of my neighbors as to what's going on, as detailed as I can, whenever I can.
Right.
There's a lot of times I don't get to post something, there's, there's things I should have posted already with the fishing camp things that took place. I just don't, I'm not social media savvy, not very good at it, I'm not up to date on it. I obviously missed your, um, your comment that you're talking about. So my apologies on that, in that regard, for not responding to you.
Okay.
But truly, you want to get ahold of me, if you see something that I've posted, you have a question about it or an inquiry, or whatever the case may be. Reach out to me directly, um, you know, call me, email me, whatever you want to do. And I'll be more than happy to talk with you. I wasn't, I didn't see it, I wasn't trying to, uh, avoid the discussion on it.
Okay. Uh, and one other topic, has there ever been a woman on the town council?
I believe so.
A what?
A woman.
A woman?
I mean, it would be nice to see some diversity. You know, I mean, it's.
Michelle Daniels.
Yeah.
So since nineteen fifty-seven, one, no?
No.
No. Since I've been here, there've been, I think, multiple women on the council, I've been here since eighty-six.
Okay.
You had, uh, Harrison.
Any person's allowed to qualify, run, and get elected.
Right, no, I understand that, but it seems like it's pretty hard to get in, get any others, any other people than the people that are here. I don't know why.
Because it's ninety-two dollars, thirty-four cents.
Post tax.
We work really hard and we make mistakes, we try to get it right. So for ninety-two dollars and thirty-four cents, if they want to come in and put in forty, fifty hours a month, you can qualify at any time, anybody can.
Okay, I was just curious, I just don't remember any women.
I was one of them that never served in any other capacity here.
Right.
But my personality is, is I want to be at the table, so I'm not on the menu. And I work very hard.
Okay, no, I realize it's, it's not for the money.
Well, I understand, but I.
It'd just be nice to see some diversity, that's all.
That's easy for you to say, but when I'm away from my business and my family. When I'm away from my business and my family, it's costing money, so it would help. We're the only ones up here that don't give ourselves raises. How long has that standard been set there, Vice Mayor Shoah?
How about this? I remember when one councilman made the motion for a raise and it was passed, and he said, "I'll see you later, I gotta go." And as soon as he left the building, we made a motion to disregard and void out that motion. We're here because we just want to help. We just want to all be good neighbors. I guarantee, I guarantee you this, for 92 bucks and change-
But it seems like everybody is, votes the same way on every issue.
Well, um, don't know about that, but I will tell you this, that's a direct result of communications. It's a direct result of relationships. It's a direct result of doing our research before we come here. And if there's an issue, we ask Mr. Clark to, to look into it and educate us. And I don't think that, let's assume that there's 100 issues and 99 of those issues are all unanimous. I think now's 99 issues are for the betterment of our neighbors and for this town. You know, just because it's not three, two, or four, or, or just because it's not three, two, one way or the other, doesn't mean that we're not doing the best job we, we, we can't.
Well, I know in the septic-to-sewers, I keep hearing that all these people are for it. Everyone up here always says, "Well, you know, I've talked to all these people and they all love it and they want to do..." But I know probably half the town is against it.
So there's 702 homes that are affected by that, so out of that, you're saying 350 are against it?
Some of the- More than that.
Folks are drawing-
There's more than-
Aren't even affected.
There's more than, I can tell you right now, there's more, a lot more than 300 and some people against it.
I-
Not that I'm worried.
No, me.
And it only affects 700 people. So you got three-quarters of the people against it.
From the 702?
Based on what?
In the town.
Beyond the people who see. 702 homes.
Yeah.
More than 702 people.
Well, I meant homes, excuse me.
I just think, you know, when you have that many people against it, you should be more open-minded, listening to them.
We are, we keep having the septic-to-sewer-
But you keep saying that it's pretty much a done deal, is what it sounds like to me. You know, build it, plan it.
Have you even gotten final plans?
I mean, it's gonna, you know, we have no numbers.
Neither do we.
You're talking 20,000 on the low end, probably up to 40,000 on the high end. For people, the average median household savings is $5,400.
I haven't, I haven't heard.
People are going to have to come up with 10 to probably 15,000 cash upfront to-
That's not-
That's not-
To know, to, to abandon their septic system and, and hook into the septic. They got to pay that upfront. That's not even counting what is going to cost.
That's not a definitive, you know?
I can tell you, it's going to be at least 10 grand. People are going to have to come up with it. There's many counties. There's, there's one, all you gotta do is Google it.
Oh, I, I tell my clients all the time, Google's a dangerous thing.
In Hernando County, in Hernando County, says, what, there was a question and answer online, "What will homeowners in this area be expected to pay?" Says, "If approved..." If approved within, this is the septic-to-sewer, "If approved, homeowners within the project location would pay a percentage of the cost estimated at 10%. Total cost of this type of project is estimated to be $30,000 per home. Based on these estimates, homeowners would be expected to pay an estimated $3,000."
Okay.
This is a primary, this is preliminary and may change with the additional state funding and input from the citizens. That's without state funding.
Okay.
Hernando County, you can, there's dozens of these places that pay anywhere from 3,000 to 6,000.
Okay.
To have septic-to-sewer converted. And we're talking 20,000 to 40,000 probably for homeowner. And if you finance it, that's, you're going to be paying 25,000 to 40,000 just for the city part. That's not counting what you're going to have to pay upfront, which, like he, like Mr. Gonzalez said, you know, do you want to send your kid to college? Or do you want to pay for a new septic system, a new septic-to-sewer system?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't see that being the decision people are going to have to make if that's one of the decisions they want to make, they can. Everybody here is sitting on a home worth over $400,000. Every single one of them, if not more or double.
So they have to take out a loan from their house?
Things happen.
Your house could be worth a million dollars. If you don't have cash, what does that matter?
You mean, what does it matter?
If your house, it doesn't matter what your house is worth, you got to have cash to pay.
Why, it's an assessment that'll be paid over 20 years.
But you still have to have that money upfront to have, to, to have the connection.
That's assuming we don't find another program or way to have that possibly-
We don't know any of that. We're, we're all in the dark on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So I, I, you're making very valid points, and I'll get to it in a second. I went to Florida League of Cities this past Friday and Saturday, and I'll get to what your point is in just a second. And that got me exposed to a lot of other leaders and folks that have been elected. And I learned a lot about how they deal with issues. And one of the things, one of the big takeaways, we're very lucky that we're part of the Florida League of Cities are extremely influential and they provide smaller cities, towns like us, with a lot of resources. And one of the big takeaways is, is that us as a small town, it shouldn't be partisan. It in fact is not partisan. It's not red versus blue. We're here in the position to provide services. And to your point, you know, we're looking at it and we have to now look at what's, and I hear you, what's in the best interest of our residents? And so I know that there, we're all looking at it very carefully. Personally, you know, I'm new to this. I haven't seen numbers. I want to see numbers. I want to be able to see the whole entire plan. And one of the takeaways from, from Florida League of Cities, it's actually a lady from Ocala, she said, "Look, there's tons of grant money." But the only way that you can actually be in a position to go and obtain that grant money is to now have an actual plan. And so I don't want to rehash, but you know, we have this thing that's happening, the lake that we all love, and we got to do something. And I'm not advocating whether it's right or wrong and different, we got to do something, right? And as a resident and as somebody that grew up on that lake, look, you know, the biomass is an issue. There's a lot of, of issues, but you know, my dad always said, "How to eat an elephant?" And you got to eat that elephant one bite at a time, right? So for us to be able to actually have a cohesive plan put in place, for us to actually be able to speak intelligently and to approach the folks that are actually going to give us, as, as Mr. Shaub Senior says, OPM, other people's money, we got to be in a position to speak intelligently. Once we are at that precipice, once we're at that crow's nest, to be able to say, "Okay, well, these are the hard and fast numbers. These are the things that we can actually concrete touch and feel. This is what, this is what the real impact is going to be," versus, you know, talking about it in a vacuum, as opposed to, so having the numbers is going to allow us to be able to make that very difficult decision. And so it's scary to be looking at something and confronting something, to be saying, "Well, gosh, I, I don't want that to come out of my pocket." And trust me, I get it, you know? I've got another one on the way in 10 days, by the way. So, um-
That was your choice.
I, I, I'm not saying it, I'm just letting you know that now what your statement is that I have to look at college, it's now times two, I'm giving you more-
All your choices, this is not our choice.
I, I'm not saying it is, Mr. Sacco. But what I am saying is that we need hard data, right? The data to be able to make the right decision and to be in a place, or we can now be in a position to get that grant money.
And we don't even know if it's going to clean up the lake.
There's a lot of uncertainty, but we got to-
So we're paying for something that we don't even know is going to work.
Well, we're going to save the rest of this for council comments. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sacco.
Can I respond to-
No. Any other council, any other audience comments? All right. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. How are you? Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Thank you for being here. My name is Cynthia Panal. I live on 1441 Arabian Road East. And I use 17th Avenue entrance into Lake Clark Shores daily, multiple times. And I find that the maintenance of these gates is a real issue. And I just had a suggestion, and I was wondering if you folks had considered that? And that would be possibly to, I know it's digital lighting now, and if you could consider putting some sort of sign, literally inbound and outbound, to the driver approaching the gate that might not be aware, or that there is a, a wait period before that gate is going to lift. And so I was thinking about this because I see it broken all the time, and I know it has to be costly. So I was hoping that maybe that consideration could come forth from you folks to do that and maybe save a few pennies here at the town.
It's a good idea.
So just maybe a sign that, it doesn't have to illuminate, but if it's dark, the car lights would illuminate it, but just something that says, you know, what is the estimated time prior to the gate lifting? There's a 30-second wait, you know, pull up, there's a 30-second wait before the gate will lift. Just, just a suggestion. And then the other question I had was, it was mentioned by you, Mayor, about the alternatives that the town has considered to clean up the lake. And I was curious, over the years, what those alternatives were? If you could elaborate on that? And, and also what were, what are those alternatives were enacted? So what did we, did we act on any of those alternatives?
Some of that took place before I, I arrived. So Dan, can you answer that question, please?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure.
Well, we're, I'll repeat, what were the alternatives to addressing the Hyacinth and, I forgot the other name of the plant that grows in the lake, as opposed to just spraying it with the pesticides? Hydrola, thank you.
So the only alternative that we've come up with, other than a chemical alternative, is a mechanical harvesting. The mechanical harvesting is incredibly expensive. It would cost us, we, the, the estimate that we did is it would cost us over a quarter million dollars a year and require two additional people. You, the mechanical harvesting equipment that they have right now is, I would call, second generation. It's really poor. It does not work very effectively. Most importantly, you have to capture everything that you harvest. We cannot simply cut these weeds and let them float downstream because we create a problem for the downstream people. So we've got to, as it were, mow the weeds, capture and collect the weeds, get them out of the lake, call them to a disposal site. It's, there, there's nothing out there that makes that easy, so we end up spending a lot of money if we're going to take that approach and do that.
Thank you. And a lot of other residents that come and proposed alternatives that were looked into, and it's not feasible. I don't recall what those were, but it was over the course of years.
Okay, so I know there are other organic, I was wondering if the town could be a little bit more organic about cleaning up the lake, you know, possibly different flora to add to the lake that would eat up some of the algae, different, you know, let's feed the lake, rather, kind of like probiotics do to yourself, to be more proactive about it. Maybe we could stock the lake with fish that would help cleanse the lake and the flora, but also the, the harvesting was another thing that I thought about. And does the town have a boat? Do we have a boat that we use that the town has?
Please, please have a boat.
Okay. And is that used regularly or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that was, I was kind of thinking, how could we use that more on a regular basis to possibly assist with harvesting some of the weeds in the lake?
It's not that type of boat.
I, I, I kind of figured.
They did come out and give us a demonstration. It's called a weedoo.
I saw it, actually, I've seen-
They did come out and give us a demonstration.
Oh, that was very, that's interesting to know that.
Yeah, it was pretty cool, actually, but it's-
A little spendy.
Very time-consuming. By the time you finish here, you'd be starting back here again, time and time again.
Right, well, maybe the other alternatives, you know, with the different flora and the different, like feeding the fish, you know, putting the fish in the lake.
I actually would like to address your, your comment in my comments for alternative, so stay tuned.
Okay, and then I had read online about, on the Lake Clark Shores, some Lake Clark Shores, that there was going to be the weed kill or the feeding of the, to kill the weeds. And so I thought that was kind of like a total conflict of interest for cleansing the lake. I mean, am I misunderstanding that? But I felt like five different herbicides, I don't know if you use herbicides, pesticides, I was curious about that, but I felt that-
Herbicides.
We are her-
It's operated by the county.
Okay.
Under Best Management Practice guise.
Awesome, awesome to know that.
Yes.
But I felt that was a little bit of a conflict of interest, just a little.
Sure.
And so I was hoping that you folks were, it's nice to know that you're, you're considering all that.
Yep.
So with that, I think I'm good. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am, for being here. We appreciate it.
Okay, and you had something you want-
Cynthia, may I ask you a question?
Yes, and it's, I'm going to say yes.
Okay, you're, you're, do you have a sister Christina? Are you formerly a more?
Yes, I am.
That's okay, very good, I thought so.
And I knew you were a free vote, so.
Yes, okay.
What he was saying is he's going to address some of the issues when we get to the council comments.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, this question comes up often, and I, I'd just like to throw out a general comment.
Sure.
The lake doesn't have an ability to keep anything in it, meaning if we put fish in or somebody said we should get a manatee and put in it, we're connected to a 26-mile chain of lakes. Those things could end up in Boca just as easy as they could be at the airport Hilton. They'll go wherever they think the best food is and the best opportunity to hide and get, and stay protected. So anything like that we can put in the lake, we just can't guarantee it'll stay here.
Sure.
You know, you can start off, it could be very large fish that would obviously be more expensive. And yes, they are going to swim where they're, they're best suited, where they're going to get their food. But that's the whole process. And yes, it is an expense, but isn't everything? I mean, we're spending a lot of money researching a project to go non-septic, so that's an expense. There is a cost, and there's a cost associated with everything. I mean, we could put something to irrigate, like fountains in the lake, to irrigate the lake and allow the fish to breed and, and allow the lake to breed. So I was just hoping that you folks, thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm out of comment cards. Any other audience comments here in person? Yes, Ms. Chenowski. Good evening.
Jen Chenowski, 7130 Pine Tree Lane. So I brought some copies, so why don't you guys just hear? Take two and then pass it around. There's coffee there, and I highlighted kind of the important part. So, um, on May 12th, on May 12th, a gentleman by the name of Benjamin, I think his last name's Rallies, he works with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. He emailed Dan Clark, our lovely town manager, letting him know that the town of Lake Clark Shores has been, I'm not going to say approved, that the DEP has accepted the 4E documents, which would take Lake Clark out of the status of being impaired and place it in a different category. Basically, what it's doing is pausing the DEP from doing any of these studies, like typically the TMDL study, to identify and address what kind of pollutions in the lake and the responsible entities, the responsible parties for the pollution, which I think is very important. So this email that Dan, that Dan received from the gentleman at the DEP basically says, and I've highlighted it there, both the FDP and the EPA feel that there is some information available publicly on the town of Lake Clark Shores website that should be revised to be more accurately, to more accurately capture state and federal regulations. And they sort of point out a few things there. So I guess my first question would be, since this was received, why hasn't the town made any effort to correct some of the information that they're saying here is publicly inaccurate? It's my first question.
Sure.
We're short staff and that means we're short expertise on how to address the website. The person that we have do it most often went on vacation and then got COVID. So we're hoping that she'll be back to work on Friday or Monday of next week and then we'll get that changed.
There've been updates to the website since May 12.
I don't believe there happened.
Yeah. The aquatic spring for the algae has been updated, many updated.
I'm sorry, I don't know who's doing that. I apologize.
It's pretty recent.
Why does this conversation have to be like this?
What's that?
Why is it if he answers the question and you try to contradict him? The only reason I say that is because this is a part of public commenting. You come up here to say something, he gives you an answer, then you tell him no, that's the wrong answer. That should not be the way we should be communicating.
What did I do?
It's completely offensive to me. I'm just saying that one council member up here, that when he answers and you do that, then.
What did I?
What did you do? You don't even know what you did.
No.
He gives you an answer, you say, no, you liar. Has been stepped on.
No, I.
No, you, you.
I didn't.
You make it sound like he's giving false information.
Well, we could get to that next, but I mean, no, that's.
No, that's the problem. It should be a question, the answer, and then you shouldn't have to say, no, that's wrong. I just feel like that's a not productive way to have a conversation during public comment. I'm sorry, Mayor, I do not need to have an outburst. I'm just, I don't know how else to say it, but I just think this is not a productive way to have communication at a council meeting.
Mm-hmm. I apologize if I in any way offended you.
It didn't offend me, it's just, it's not productive.
It seems I did offend you, though.
No, you didn't offend me.
You just said you were offended by.
Well.
You just said, you said the word, so I'm apologizing.
See, you're doing exactly to me what you did to him. Why don't you do it to all of us?
Which is what? I apologize.
Which is, just talk. Why, why is it that if I say something, you're like, no, you said that. Can we just have a conversation?
Okay.
I mean, we are all up here, public elected officials that can pay zero. Paul does a lot of work, Bob does a lot of work. We all do a lot of work to try to get this right.
Okay.
And then you come in and when our town manager is giving you an answer, you completely like, just blow up in his face. No, that's wrong, that's wrong. He told you, he told you about an employee having COVID? It's true, okay?
I didn't say it wasn't true.
And then, and then, but you imply, but you imply that he's lying, that there have been corrections done to the website.
I didn't say the word lie. I just, I pointed out the fact that since this, the date of this email, there have been corrections made. There have been these updates, it's called latest news.
Here's the answer, it'll happen. There you go. What's your next issue?
That's not really the answer I was hoping for.
See, that's again the problem.
Well, it, when will, when will it happen? I mean, it'll happen as, but soon is not really very direct.
Okay.
So there's one person that can update information on the town website.
What are your additional comments?
So I'm sorry if I offended you, you did say I did, so I'm trying to apologize. I find it offensive, the way you kind of speak to other people, like you just spoke to me. You're kind of just saying, well, what's your next question? Move on. But I, I just read a sentence and I asked a question. So Dan told me that there's, it sounds like maybe one person that updates the town website. And all I said in addition to that, and I didn't mean to be in any way combative, I didn't think I was, was just that since the date of this email, there have been updates to the website. Because we, you have to understand that we all don't hear every conversation. Obviously, that's what these public meetings are for. And we're trying to look for resources to find information. So a lot of that information, I do not go on social media, I don't have a Facebook. I go on the town website, which I think when we're all here meeting, we're instructed to do that. So if that's a source of information, I'm just trying to find out like when that might be corrected and saying soon or saying it will be and what's your next question?
Mr. Clark just advised in the next week or so, didn't he?
No, he didn't, he didn't say that.
He said that. Yeah.
It said Friday or Monday.
Yeah.
She comes back. Oh, did you say a word Friday or Monday? Oh, I missed that. I know you said when she comes back, I don't know what that would mean.
Ms. Chenowski, I had a question. This email from Mr., from Ben, referencing Mr. O'Block's comments, references a, an attachment. We have not been provided with an attachment.
Well, at all the meetings, we're not really provided attachments either. So there is an attachment. I mean, Dan has it, he could probably send it to you.
Ms. Chenowski, I'm, I'm just asking for, I didn't need any of the additional. I just wanted to know if there is an attachment that you can provide.
I mean, I brought this single sheet of paper. There might have been, you know how many emails and attachments I've had with the DEP?
I understand, it says, we apologize for the delay in getting back with you. Attached, please find a document. There's no document attached to it. So if you can, if you have the opportunity, can you please provide me with that?
Yeah, Dan could provide it with you. It's the 4E acceptance letter. I mean, Dan could provide it for you.
Thank you, Ms. Chenowski.
I'm not like omitting anything, I'm just referencing what someone said in an email to Dan about correcting what's going on on the website.
Thank you for the clarification.
So on an email from Mr., again, Rouse, he works for the DEP, addressed to myself and several other residents, he was clarifying some information we asked him regarding the whole septic to sewer project. And he wrote this, and I'm going to just read it. It's the second page I gave you, it's highlighted. Although EPA and DEP have offered their acceptance of this document and actions proposed by the town of Lake Clark Shores, this does not constitute a requirement for Lake Clark Shores to implement this septic to sewer conversion project. So I just wondered, with that being said, we've been told numerous times that we're being mandated to put sewer in, in an effort to improve the lake. So I'd like to know where exactly and how we're being mandated when it says right here that this is not, this does not constitute a requirement.
Okay, we'll address that during council comments, the status reports.
There's no answer.
It will be provided at the council comments and status reports.
Okay. Okay. I was hoping I could get answers now, but.
You will.
I have to wait, okay.
Now is at the meeting.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other audience questions, comments, I should say? Any other audience comments? Yes, sir.
Kevin Klop, 1600 Corandus Road.
Welcome.
I just want to follow up on the proposed chemical treatment of the lake for removal of weeds. And I've talked to a couple of other people that have had this happen in their particular areas. And there is grave concern that these chemicals are not environmentally friendly to the fish. And they tend to cause other issues with the water. And I know we're trying our best to clean up the water. And the other point I wanted to make is, and he pointed out, well, if we put fish in and they're going to leave, well, doesn't that mean that the water from other places is coming in is also a source of pollutant to our local water?
Sure.
And are, what are we doing? Are we, is this going to come in comments after, at the end? That we're, what we're trying to do here? And do we know what herbicides we're putting into the water? And do we know that they're safe to the aquatic life in the water?
Concern, I think Mr. Councilman, Preville can certainly address that. He is our resident expert, as far as I'm concerned on.
You can go on.
Chemicals.
You can find out, you can get ahold of Clark, you can get ahold of a wide variety of, not Mr. Clark, Clark Aquatics, a lot of places that maintain lakes and everything, or weed control. These, all of these products that they use that are herbicides, all have labels and the label is the law. And these applicators are held to a standard for these applications that they do. And I'll give you an example. I think it was maybe three or four years ago, the hydrola was choking out the lake. You can't cut hydrola from the bottom. The solution to that problem would be to dredge the lake. Terribly expensive, very expensive. We've looked at it for years and years, not just the dredging of it, but then also getting rid of what you take off the bottom and where do you put it? So I agree with you. Listen, I'm a best management practice guy, that's my business. That's what I do. I've long advocated for a blackout period for fertilization, all sorts of different things. But as you walk around and you heard Mr. Doctry talk about it before, with friendly, Florida friendly plants, you know, all of these different strategies that are to be used, they're out there, we have to use them. Have you ever been into Lake Osborne or is your house on the lake or?
No, it's not.
You're not, okay.
But I'm in the area affected by.
No, I understand, I'm just saying.
Septic to sewer and I'm like, really? I mean, I, I'm just one street away.
Do you, well, hold on now, you asked me a question, I'm going to give you the full answer.
Yes, sir.
And the full answer is, is that throughout the chain of lakes, the water flows. We get theirs, they get ours, the whole nine yards. Things are going to continue to flow in. This is the best strategy to control the weed population in the lake right now. That it's not council, the town of Lake Clark Shores that is saying this. It's the biologists, it's the county, it's the guys that actually implement those treatments that are saying that. So do you, can answer however you feel. Do you feel that a strategy to convert from septic to sewer would not help improve the quality of the water?
As an engineer, I'd have to see the data to make an answer on that.
Well, the data is, is that it will help. It's not the only answer. It will help improve the water quality. I've told you before, I'm on the three top subjects for the Florida League of Cities that Mr. Gonzalez just brought up. Water quality, water quantity, septic to sewer. Those are the three biggest things affecting the entire state of Florida. That's not Lake Clark Shore saying that. So when you get that information, you have to start looking at it. I happen to be of the opinion, and this came up before, which is how I got here, is that you can't for one second think that something that it's, it's water to water. If you don't improve one area of it, it's not the only solution to our problem. There's got to be more. It's going to be more, it's going to be expensive. I want everybody to keep coming in for these budget hearings and look at the money we have and where it goes and what we have to do. So I am of the belief, and my daughter, my youngest daughter is an environmental engineer, that converting will help improve water quality, plain and simple. It's not the only answer. And I know that, and I agree. And I have to pay that bill too. So that's my belief, is that it will help improve water quality. It is not the only answer. I personally don't think herbicides should be applied, really. But I also know this, that the weeds, the weeds are here to stay, they're invasive. Hydrola is an invasive weed, by the way. If you look it up, you'll see.
Yep.
And they have a treatment program for it, a management program for that. It will choke out these whole chain of lakes in five to seven years, maybe. Maybe a little bit longer, maybe a little bit less. So there has to be some form of strategy, wouldn't you agree?
I, I didn't argue that.
So then, yes, you would. You would agree that there has to be a strategy.
I would agree there has to be a strategy.
It's part of the strategy. And we don't have numbers up here, we don't have numbers up here either.
Correct, openly, numbers openly disclosed.
I agree. And they're on their way, they're coming, they're working on it.
Yeah, they're all.
I think we just approved the task order tonight.
We did.
So it's, there's strategies involved. I run the fishing tournament. Do you fish? The fish are, the fish are healthy here. They're alive, they're well, they don't have lesions, they don't have worms. Not all of them, but a lot of the fish that I see, and I see a lot of fish coming out of this lake and the chain of lakes, they're actually in pretty good condition. The invasive species are growing leaps and bounds here, which is not a good thing. So introducing different species is a tricky thing, you know?
Again, I, I'm more concerned about the application of herbicides.
I agree. I totally agree. So right now, they have a best management practice strategy that they implement. And the county takes care of the main.
Numbers must be significantly skewed for mechanical removal versus herbicide.
I would say that mechanical is probably a deal breaker from a financial aspect.
Two X versus?
I, I, I'm not sure. I don't know, we did look, we've explored a lot of avenues.
Okay.
Because I've had others before, they've talked about aeration to move the weeds along, do this, do that.
Right.
There's a lot of strategies, but you've got to put them all into like your toolbox and figure out what strategies are going to work the best. Because I'm like you guys, I love Lake Clark Shores. I've lived on the chain of lakes since 1970. I grew up being a little water rat, fishing, chasing frogs, chasing snakes, doing all that kind of stuff. It's disheartening to see some of the things that occur in there and the debris and the garbage. It's just breaks my heart, really, to be honest with you. So I'm a guy that wants to look at strategies. I have nowhere to your motive. I feel like if we do the conversion, you're going to get that money back in, in the value of your property. If you put in 20 grand, your property value is going to go up by 20 grand. Are you going to incur another little expense? Yes. But I would be willing to bet that it's, it's worth it in the long run for the longevity of the lake, the thing that drives Lake Clark Shores, even if you don't live on the lake. And these are just my opinions, but I'm a strategy guy and I'm willing to look at anything. Nobody's mind is made up. We have been going down a long, we're going down because it's, it was 15 to 17 years ago. It just came up again. It was sent to a referendum. My feeling is, is it was, it got implemented wrong, but that's another story for another day. Here we are today, looking at what our strategy should be. Strategy should definitely to reduce herbicides in the water, without a doubt.
But we're going to apply them.
Pardon me?
But we're going to apply herbicides to kill the weeds.
Just, you know, that's not us doing that.
We should also be implementing a blackout period for, for nitrogen because nitrogen is one of the big things that are in the water.
Completely agree.
And we know that, it's not just.
It's runoff, it's rain runoff.
We got other, other, there's a whole host of problems that we got to address as well. It's, it's the septic sewer conversion is only one aspect.
Picture, and we understand it's very contentious. And I feel for everybody. I, you know, like I said, I'm, we raised six children here. I've lived on a budget my entire life.
But, and, and I'm retired, so there's no more extra money hanging on me.
I can't wait to even say that, sir. I can't wait to say that.
Sure. Thank you very much for your, your comments and your attendance, we appreciate it. Any other audience comments for those in attendance? Get anything written in an advance or online?
A lot of hands up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
One of those hands is Jennifer Chenowski. But since she's here, I'm going to guess I can take her, I can put her, your hand down.
I get second questions, I get fifth line?
No, ma'am, once is fine.
Oh, once is fine, okay.
Carolyn Farino has her hand up.
Okay.
Ms. Farino?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Caroline Farino. I live at 1429 Beta Court. I think I'm just a little confused because you guys just stated that the fish in the lake are healthy, but in the video posted on Facebook, you guys said that we shouldn't eat the fish in the lake.
Well, that's a different story. That's a mercury content and the Department of Health actually puts that out. You are allowed one fish a year, according to the Health Department place. I don't know anybody that eats fish anymore. I wouldn't. I'm a catch and release guy. Our tournament is catch and release. The fish have to swim away in order to be counted. And so I, I don't, I don't have, I'm with you, Jen. I don't do any Facebook, I can't even spell Facebook. And this is why, because there's so much misinformation. Get out there, get on the water, go out, take a look, see what's happening. Take the big bucket full and see what you get. It might not be too pretty.
Did you have any other comments, ma'am?
No, I think that's it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Joe O'Block.
Mr. O'Block?
Says he's self muted.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, I submitted some questions in writing and I was told that they wouldn't be read here. So I guess I'm, I'm hoping that Mr. Clark will go ahead and read those.
This is quite a long set of questions.
I, uh, am happy to read them. Mr. Mayor would like.
Have all of his questions been answered?
Uh, I don't have answers to some of these questions.
Why don't you read them out and we can discuss them, uh, at council comments?
I'll read them.
Okay.
Okay. So my first question is, um, on Facebook, I asked the mayor if the town would post a dashboard on its website that shows per project phase, the cost, the amount of funding applied for, the amount of funding received and expected cost per homeowner. Um, that seemed to be something that others, including the mayor liked. So is this something that the town will implement?
Uh, I can answer that question. I don't know what a dashboard would be. Um, I'm not that tech savvy. But with regard to posting information about, uh, grants we've applied for, the status of those applications, uh, and the money received or the money not received, meaning the request was denied. I did discuss that with Mr. Clark and we're gonna try and see if I put something like that together. So that everybody's updated on those issues. That was a good idea. Again, I don't know if that complies with your, with your vision of a dashboard, but I appreciate the suggestion.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, really just, um, you know, something that shows those statistics for every phase of the project, uh, would be a dashboard, so. Um, that, that as long, if you have any questions, we can talk about it, but it sounds like we're on the right page. Um, the other, the other is that, um, you know, is there any, uh, you know, there's a lot of talk about the seven hundred and two residents paying for road construction and the swell modifications that go along with that. Um, and but everyone else in the town is gonna use those roads and they're gonna benefit from the swell modifications. Um, and I'm just wondering how the town can like justify uh, charging just those seven hundred and two residents to pay, pay that. I mean, is that, is that a done deal? Or is that gonna happen or? Um, is that just hearsay?
Interesting that everything is is hearsay, um, uh, but nothing's a done deal.
Okay. So, so it's possible that road construction and swell modifications would not be part of the bill that that goes to the seven hundred and two residents.
I don't know about that.
Okay. So no commitment one way or another.
We can address it further during status reports or council comments.
All right, um. Okay, and actually earlier in the meeting, um, well, actually I'll skip that Jen sort of addressed it. Um, so in the acceptance letter from the floor D D P, um, they, um, said that, uh, the acceptance of the, uh, four E plan, uh, represents D P's acknowledgement of proactive efforts by stakeholders. Um, it was on to say that, um, however, the department's acceptance of the document is independent of the agency's permitting processes and the projects activities outlined within the document are still required to meet all applic- applicable permitting requirements prior to their implementation. D E P will reconsider the continued retention of Lake Clark in category four E if the activities outlined in the Lake Clark four E document are not implemented as scheduled. Um, department reviews the status of these activities as a component of its next biannual assessment scheduled for the completion, completion in twenty twenty-four. So basically, wh- what they're saying is that, uh, the way I understand it is that if the plan is not completed, uh, before the scheduled biannual assessment for in twenty twenty-four, then they will, um, move the, the, the lake out of four E and then go ahead and conduct a T D M L, a T M D L. Is that correct?
No.
No.
All right, so did I, what did I interpret wrong in that?
We can discuss that later. What's your next question?
Um, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions, Mr. Clark?
Uh, there have been lots and lots of questions tonight. I think we, online, I think we have answered all of them.
Okay.
And there are no more hands raised.
All right. Thank you. Truly appreciate all those who came forward and and participated in the meeting and provide their comments and suggestions for all of us to consider. Let's move on to status reports. We'll start with chief.
Okay. Um, all of you have a copy of the report. Uh, just briefly, our five L P R cameras, license plate reader cameras checked over sixty-five thousand vehicles within the past month. We had, uh, no violations and no hits, which is great. Um, there were a couple of narcotics arrests and some traffic arrests. Uh, two of our part-time officers, um, were able to receive a week of training and get certified on the marine unit. So I guess there's a couple of extra people to help out on the weekends. Also, we'll talk a little bit about it, but the Sheriff's Department presented the, uh, Police Department, the town three thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. This is forfeiture money that, um, was obtained during a narcotics investigation with the Sheriff's Department's organized crime and narcotics unit. There's also another five thousand dollars that we'll be receiving in the near future. So if I, if if you have any questions or anything, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief? All right. Mr. Shek?
My report is included in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You were busy the past month.
I was busier this month than the previous, yes.
Any questions for Mr. Shek? No? All right.
I actually had one quick question. Charlie. Um, Charlie, there was an opinion, I guess, asked of you in the report about, um, uh, basketball nets.
Mr. Rodriguez.
There was a question asked about a basketball hoop and whether that can be on the street. Um, could you look into this issue? We're allowed to park a car on the street. So how would that be any different than having a basketball hoop on the street? I know it's a loaded question and I've been thinking about it and I can't figure out.
The car is a motor vehicle. It is, uh, the streets are for motor vehicles. Uh, there's a state statute and we also looked at your code and it was our opinion that to put, to place a basketball hoop on the street is an obstruction of the street. Uh, we can address it further. Uh, that doesn't prohibit the basketball hoop from being off of the pavement.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, so right now it's, it's my opinion that it constitutes an obstruction in the roadway.
But if you park a car there and leave it there, it's, you're saying it's just because of the nature of the fact that it's movable because it's a car?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Okay, I just, uh, we can debate that later, but I, people have asked me that question and I.
The cars also have, uh, reflectors. Most of these hoops that are in the road right of way do not have any reflectors and, uh, they pose a hazard.
Actually read that. I thought, well, if they just back it up to three feet and it's on the grass or driveway.
Right, you still have the hoop hanging over, but.
But the hoop hanging over would be, would not be an obstruction, correct?
It would certainly be much less and it could be tolerated. It's when you place the entire apparatus in the street that it becomes a problem.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. Like, I don't know where it's a problem in town, but.
We had, uh, three and we addressed them and the people cooperated and moved them.
Oh, okay.
So.
I don't think now it's not, right now it's not an issue.
I think it's a big problem.
I got a question. I think, I can't, I can't for the trailers. Um, but Val's question gave you a solution. I, I have utility trailers. I have two of them. So if I put one on my car and park it on the street with reflectors attached, that's all my.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a valid point, but, um, we're gonna be talking about those here in a minute. I think when we get to the, uh, council comments or potentially center. It won't be, we're almost there. We're almost there. Uh, Mr. Lynch?
My report is in your package.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Lynch on the, uh, status of our septic sewer conversion project?
No.
Bill, you keep doing a great job. Really appreciate your hard work. And for those that don't know, uh, many residents have reached out and asked to work with the town and get information and speak to the engineers directly to see if there's maybe something that we're missing, to see if there's another avenue to be looked at and considered because maybe they're bringing, for whatever reason, their area of expertise is different. Or they're bringing in a fresh and new perspective at the outside looking in. And Mr. Lynch has opened his door and has been communicating with those residents uh, to work and see if there's a better way or something that we're missing. So, uh, truly appreciate your continued hard work. You can get his information from Mr. Clark. We can do an email introduction is typically how it begins. Absolutely. All right, Mr. Clark.
Um, I just have a couple of things to add. Uh, I mentioned earlier, Kim Miller from the Palm Beach Post did reach out. Uh, and we provided her essentially the same information we provided to the board of County Commission. Um, some clarification on the seventy-five million that the, um, that the commissioner said they had for, uh, septic to sewer. Um, I've provided that information here earlier. It's only six and a half million uh, because those dollars have been committed to other projects. So, um, she'll be writing an article, but I'm not sure when. There's also new money. Uh, Speaker Sprouls managed to get a hundred and seventy-five million dollars in the budget for special allocations out of the House. It's going to be treated similar to a legislative appropriation, but it's gonna happen before the session and uh, will not have to go through the governor or the Senate. So we are applying for that, should have our application up there um, on Thursday. And in speaking with Representative Silver's office, it's going to be essentially the same as what we did not get funded last year. So half of the, uh, cost of the septic to sewer project for Micah West and some money for cleaning the, uh, lake.
That's wonderful.
Uh, and then there are two other grant, uh, projects that we're going after. Uh, one is a vulnerability assessment. Uh, we're going to ask for money to take a look at, uh, our flooding issues in the town and see if we can find a way to resolve them. Uh, fortunately, we don't have a lot, but we have a few. And so if we can find a way to address them, that'd be great. Uh, and then there's another D P grant out there for, uh, septic to sewer dollars. So we're going after that.
That's great news. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Clark? No. Now we're on to council comments. Um, you know, typically we, we go individual by individual, but given some of how the audience comments went, I would like to discuss some topics first and then go individually through those topics or if the conversation lends itself and you want to add in, just go ahead and 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 follow it up. Uh, so we can have some open dialogue here on the council about some of these issues. So, um, let's, we already discussed, uh, why we should discuss the trailers in the boats first. I have it as trailers and boats, uh, because my understanding is that, uh, you can't have more than two trailers or utility trailers, or how are trailers defined? And is it one utility trailer in a boat? If that's appropriate, okay. What if it's a utility trailer, a boat and a camper? Is the camper now considered something different? And according to our code, the way I read it, it defines utility trailers, which could be like that gentleman that came up and said he's got his, uh, four wheeler on it. That would be a utility trailer. Uh, but he's also got a couple of boat trailers and he's got, it sounded like he had a camper or something there as well. So I find it very difficult uh, for the residents to appreciate what the code says if you're sitting, if we're sitting here defining the number of campers, RVs, boat trailers, jet ski trailers, open trailers, cargo trailers. We don't need to have that many definitions uh, in my opinion, and certainly welcome your, your thoughts. But we could group all of it together if we wanted to and come up with a number.
Right now, so that you know, the code says you cannot have more than one utility trailer. A boat trailer and a, uh, and similar trailers for jet skis and that type of thing are not included under the definition of utility trailer. And you can have multiple boat trailers. They just can't exceed fifty-five feet. You can also have one recreational vehicle. I don't believe the code is that complicated, but it may need to be addressed because of some of the issues in town.
Chair, please.
Uh, Charlie, is there language in there for the trailers and where they're located and the covering? Or the fencing or shrubbery or things of that nature to like block the view?
Well, yes. And when you use the term block the view, it's not a complete blockage because if you have a six-foot fence and you have a boat on a trailer that's higher than six foot, if it's behind the fence, it's screened, but you can still see it.
But still, there is language in there that does.
Yes.
Defines what you do there.
Yes.
Okay.
Also, that brings up another good point is the screening of these boats and, um, and trailers. So my understanding is the boat can be on the side of your house behind the front face of your home and it's fine.
Yes.
It doesn't require shrubberies fence, whether opaque or not. Um, I don't know why we have two separate classifications for that, meaning why boats are treated different than a trailer would be treated. I received a, uh, one of the issues I received today from a resident is he has a boat trailer, a uti- a utility trailer in the, in the sense that he's got like a, uh, a buggy on it, you know, somebody takes out to the farms or whatever.
Yeah.
And he has, I think, a utility trailer.
He's got a half truck.
Yeah, so he's got all these things and his driveway is massive that unless you are the two people living near him, you won't ever see it. Um, and it's, it's screened in the sense that it's behind the house, the front of the house. He's called me because I've lived here fifteen years. I've never once had this issue. Um, what's going on? What do I do? How do I fix it? What are y'all gonna do? I said, well, we're gonna be discussing it tonight.
Can I, I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Since it's, uh, we're after three hours in this, and all our eyes are red. Um, I think it would be a nice, I, I would propose that we place moratorium on enforcing section one twenty-five dash seven six seven.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I would make a suggestion that we place a moratorium on enforcing section one twenty-five dash seven six three, which is the parking of specified vehicles in residential districts, which is very inclusive and very complicated. Um, until we can further review the issue and not enforce any of the citations that were just issued in the last few weeks.
And let me advise you that you have the ability to enact an ordinance imposing a moratorium. This is a code which is adopted by ordinance. You can only place a moratorium on the enforcement of the code by ordinance. And that's under state statute.
So we can't.
You cannot do it by motion or resolution.
Okay, so that requires a couple of readings, doesn't it? The public hearings on it?
It does.
Are we able to by motion ask that, um, we stay all proceedings and code enforcement on this issue? I think you can do it that way. The, well, well, wait, I'm asking the attorney and I'm having no's from people in the audience. I don't. No, no, I'm asking the attorney a question and I'm hearing no's from people in the audience. That makes no sense, Mr. Shek.
The code enforced, once a citation is issued, the matter then is in front of the code enforcement board. Uh, they have the ability to rule on that at a public hearing. Uh, they have the ability to find a violation, to find no violation or to postpone action on the matter for further information. Uh, but that, that lies with the code enforcement board, not the town council.
So what power do we have as a town council?
You can, you can direct, uh, the staff to prepare a moratorium ordinance. You can make recommendations as a council to the code enforcement board regarding matters which are scheduled to come before them. Uh, but unfortunately you can't by a motion, uh, create a moratorium on it.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and the motion will be as follows. We are going to direct staff to immediately come up with an ordinance for moratorium under one twenty-five dash seven six seven and also make an official recommendation to the code enforcement board to not enforce or at least postpone enforcement under one twenty-five dash seven six seven until such time as the code, the town council can revisit this ordinance. Is that an appropriate motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we'll have to revisit that at the next meeting. I think we should, uh, put it on, on unfinished business.
So the audience knows all we've done tonight was we made an official recommendation to code enforcement from the town council not to enforce the citations that were issued and we're gonna start working on them, on the moratorium.
Can you guys just come to our property during act hours before you can make the decisions from this room?
Yes, not one of you have been to our property to see what's going on. And this wasn't a trailer issue. This was a business.
Ma'am, you and I
Never asked for the trailers to be violated, every trailer in town. I asked for the state. I asked for them to enforce the law statutes regarding this home-based business.
Ma'am, please, please sit down.
Point of water.
Thank you. All right. So that includes the screening issue that we mentioned.
Well, that's what I want clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's in that same ordinance.
Is that in that same
Yes, one twenty-five dash seven six seven includes includes all of that.
Okay, right.
Good. Now, do we want staff to make suggested recommendations of modifying or expanding or restricting or further elaborate elaboration on this particular section? Wants recommendations?
Yes. I think when we get the information and over the, you know, that's what we're going to be doing, working with staff to see.
Because I'd like to see what other municipalities have in this regard. Because I was under the impression that some neighbors called me up and they said, Bob, as long as I'm behind the, is it the garage or the the house line? That, you know, I should be okay. And then there was an issue as to whether or not, what's the definition of opaque screening? And I said, I'm not sure. But if they have a trailer, if they have a boat, they have a jet ski. As long as they have two, if it's two or three, so long as it's behind the property, the house line. There was a concern. And I think Robert, I think what's his name? Has been here for thirty-some odd years. So is this part of the, I want this to be part of the recommendation in the review process.
Okay.
You've been to his house.
Please drive by these homes, please. I beg of you to drive by these homes.
You know, thank you so much for bringing everything to the to the town's attention. Thank you very much for bringing it to the town's attention and our attention, but let's just have some courtesy, please. That's all I ask.
I would like your courtesy to consider what I live with every day.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ma'am. What was the next issue? I know.
You have the gavel, sir. He's returned momentarily, but I believe we're under his comments.
Well, I'm going to take, you know, father privilege here. Mr. Clark, there was an issue that was raised. There were some concerns with regard to the the subject to sewer issue that we said that we would address in council comments. Did you have anything to add or to clarify? And any of the concerns that were raised online or in? Because they want, you know, where's this? Why don't we have this? Where are the plans? I think that, you know, there's a process to go, and I just want to put that issue aside and I guess put it to rest.
We we have been working under the plan, if you will, that we have to to design it, permit it, then fund it. And then we can decide when we bid and build it. So we're we're still working on the permitting, on the design. Micah West does not have any geotechnical information. We're hoping to get some geotechnical information out of that area in the next month. But the plans without the geotech information have been submitted for permitting. So that's in the permitting process. And tonight we approve the design of the vacuum pump station, which will cover the rest of the phases. That's going to take a year to complete. The design process is not a rapid process. And we'll have to collect geotech information in that process as well.
So when the, when the, when the, you know, the, my words, the the demand, the pounding, when are we going to receive this? When are we going to, how much it's going to cost and all this? It's a process. And that process is still far away.
I would hope by October, we have information on Micah West. And then by October of twenty-three, hopefully, we can have information on the rest of the vacuum system.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for taking over that moment. I had to step away. On the septic sewer conversion, if anybody else has any comments, please do, but I want to get out there. Whether we receive funding in a month or a year or three years or four years before the end of the, at the end of the complete project, all of those funds are going to be used to offset the entire cost of the entire project. So whether we get started on Micah West and then a year later, we get more funding. Okay, well, that's going to go towards offset the whole project. If we get monies now, that money is going to be used to offset the entire project. If we get monies four years from now, because of the status of how the project is progressing and we're beyond shovel ready, we're actually doing it. And we, that allows us a better opportunity to get more funding. And we get that funding, it is going to be applied to offset all of the costs across all the, all the affected residents and homes. So it's, it just further shows that it's important that we're not delaying getting this process done and waiting for literally every centilla of information we could get all the way through all the phases in order to start applying for 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 money. It's it's important that we are progressing forward. So now we're not just shovel ready, we get to the point where we're actually constructing. And when that's going to put us even a better situation than just being shovel ready. If we're not shovel ready, we're in the worst position. If we're shovel ready, we're in a great position. And if we're actually doing construction and we're showing not only we're ready to do the plan, but we're actually implementing it, that shows that the government entities, when we're going for these grants and appropriations, that hey, they're not saying they're going to do it. They're actually doing it. They need the funding now. So that's how it's been expressed to me from all those that I've spoken to. From the town, our engineers, our consultants. So that's really how we've been approaching this for quite some time now.
I just have one comment on that. I wanted to say that with Ms. Trnowski gave us this email, I have no problem with the email being provided to us. She highlighted a section of it, but then she didn't highlight the next sentence. And this is the issue I have. And this is why I don't think, I'm very upset about the argumentative nature of how we go about this. The next sentence says, the acceptance of this document is rather an acknowledgement of the proactive efforts that if implemented will have beneficial impacts on area water quality. Okay, that that sentence is just as important as the sentence right before, which is clear that there is no mandate to Lake Clark Shores to implement this at this time. I think it's important to, I, as a council member, I just want to know what are the beneficial impacts on water quality? And I want to understand how we're going to do this. And I want to understand the best way to do this so we can get the most money, the best thing for a buck. That's how I see it. So I don't mind anyone, I want to be clear, I don't mind anyone providing us with any information. I just think that this should be done in a productive way where we don't constantly argue back and forth, but you just present. And the the problem I had earlier tonight was all I could hear was when Dan would give a answer, there was then a sarcastic response back. And it was a back and forth, back and forth, very argumentative, while Mr. Clark was simply trying to give an answer. And it happened to me when I was asking a question from our town attorney. I just don't like that type of communication. Thank you.
I have some comments regarding septic sewer. You know, at the very start of this, I'm, it's no secret, I'm new to this. And, you know, to get up to speed to it, you want to question everything, right? You don't just take for for granted what's been told to you, what's been said to you. And in that same vein, I started out with the premise that says, hey, what's the issue, number one? And number two, what are alternatives, right? And I've talked previously about alternatives and some of the alternatives at other communities in the state of Florida, because I think as a Floridian, I think it's irrefutable to understand that we rely on our water and we don't have enough of it. And there continues, people keep moving in. And it's really going to put a strain on our water system and our ecosystem in years to come. So with that being said, you've got the aquifers. We have a very low water table or a very short water table. We can access water pretty quickly. So other communities have have looked into septic systems with the tank and the drain field that removes nitrogen, right? It actually, there's a process by skimming it off or segmenting it in a certain way. And those are also expensive systems. And so looking at that and weighing the cost and benefit, but the only way to weigh those costs and benefits or that type of analysis is to have the full picture, the full set of deck and all of the information, right? Just touching briefly on water quality, you know, we had some questions about have we looked into other things? I've previously mentioned that we've looked into and I've had long conversations with Dan about a it's a chemical or a type of a mineral, it's called Foslock, and that actually locks up the phosphorus and they did it in one of the lakes in West Palm, I believe it was Pine Lake. And so we're still waiting back to hear from not only the company, I don't want, just want to hear from the company because they have something to sell. I want to know from from the city of West Palm Beach, what was the long term effects of that? And it actually was a chemical that was applied. I believe in twenty twenty, if I'm not mistaken. And so, you know, we want to see some efficacy with that, right? During our town barbecue, we actually, I was actually approached by somebody that knew of a program, it's called hemp for water. And what they do is they actually get hemp plants and they put it on a barge. And I didn't know this, but hemp plants actually suck up and require a lot of nitrogen, a lot of phosphorus. So we're looking into that. Dan's reached out to them. And so I just, I want to be able to facilitate a really good exchange of information because, look, I know it's cliche, but if we're against each other, we're not going to get much done. But if we're together and we're all providing information, more information is good, more information is better. You know, if we have something, you know, whether it's case studies, whether it's analysis, whether it's data, whether it's an opinion, bring it forward. What I'm disheartened with is the gotcha moments where, you know, it's, it's, nobody's on trial here. We're public officials. And I think one of the other councilmen said, we get paid ninety-two dollars a month after taxes and everything. It's ninety-two something. You know, and I'm, I'm in Dan's office at least once a month, if not more. We talk on the phone because I want to know what's going on. And the only way that we can accomplish our goals is together. And and I find it disheartening when we're butting heads. We're public servants and we're here to do your will. We're here to make sure that the services in our town are provided for. Hold us accountable, ask for the information. That's wonderful. But let's do it in a positive way, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't want to piggyback on with Congressman Rodriguez, but I asked the question, I read the document that we were given. And it clearly states, and I was going to say this, but you beat me to the punchline. I asked the question, do you think, my good neighbor, my friend, that it would have an impact on the water quality? You weren't sure, but from the director, from Mr. Benjamin Ralas, from the Florida DEP, it clearly says the acceptance of this document is rather an acknowledgement of the proactive efforts that if implemented, will have beneficial impacts on area water quality.
Will likely be to beneficial impact.
Will have is what my, what my document says is will have beneficial impacts on area water quality from the DEP.
Again, again, he's, this is not a debate forum.
My document says right here, you gave me, Jen, it says, the acceptance of this document is rather an acknowledgement of the proactive efforts that if implemented, will have beneficial impacts on area water quality. And these attorneys up there can tell you difference tweet, will, shall, should, could, all of those sorts of words. Okay, thank you. Improved water quality, improved water quality is what the DEP is saying.
Hold on.
We used to do nutrient management for new substances. We would actually calculate storm control, wastewater, any, any component of a development we would include as far as phosphorus and nitrogen. But what we're committed into trying to design a system around. If we did that, we're Lake Park Shores right now.
Listen.
It would fail that.
I'm more than happy to stay after the meeting and talk with you. The time for audience comments is past. And if you can raise it when the meeting is over and we can talk. All right, you want to make sure you talk to us? Well, I'll make myself available. I don't know about the rest of the guys up here, but I will. And you can communicate that to me. And I'm more than happy to spend as much time with you as you want.
His name for the record?
I don't know. Red Thompson. All right. Any other issues with septic to sewer that we want to discuss at the moment?
No.
Okay. Let's go to the speed bump, sorry, speed tables. I had that written down. Is there any additional discussion of them what we had earlier? No. Okay. So we discussed this, the whole requirement, not requirement. Look, we have said consistently up here, if we don't take action on septic sewer, because I'm revising that topic, then we're going to, in one way, shape or form, be forced to down the road. We're taking control of our own destiny here. We're being proactive. We are we are being recognized by DEP and the the other related entities on how great a job we're doing at being proactive. It's kind of rare where other municipalities, you know, acknowledge the good of others or other inner, inner other agencies do that. We're small. And we're sitting here being more proactive than some of the larger communities. And I think that's a testament to our staff and the and the leadership of the council. All right. Dan, did, did you address, I don't know if you did when I left for a moment, the question about swale, the redoing of the roads and the swales? Why can that not be a cost distributed? Let's first assume you could separate it out, assuming that, but that would not be a cost shared by all residents of Lake Clark Shores. Because I'm presuming they're also including the ones in Wellesley and the ones in the other HOAs, so.
So the way that an assessment typically works for utility type activities, whether it's water, wastewater or drainage, is that you create a benefit unit. That benefit unit defines that the benefit that each parcel receives is the obligation of that parcel to pay. So it's a fair share. Most of the time, they define a single family parcel as one unit. And so that one unit gets, all, all single family parcels get assessed the same. And that assessment is their fair share of the benefit being received. The roadways would not be torn up if the pipe wasn't going in the ground. So typically, that disruption to the pavement is considered a benefit to that homeowner because the pipe went in the ground. And therefore, the benefit unit obligates the repair of that roadway to that particular unit. Mr. Scheck probably can elaborate on that. But that's typically the way it's done.
And so let's assume a question, a hypothetical question I would get from someone saying, well, if it's typically, then is there a scenario where we assess every resident of the town of Lake Clark Shores, which I think would be just off the cuff and proper, because there's plenty of people that don't use these roads that live in the other HOAs, not associated with Wesley and Bytry. You know, is that something that is, the town could even consider?
It would be very untypical and you may have a problem assessing a property owner who is not receiving the benefit. And as Mr. Clark stated, if the road is torn up because of the installation of the sewer, that cost of repairing the road is part of the sewer improvement. It's not a general road improvement throughout the community. The other thing that he addressed was it's typically done by a lot, but it can also be done on front footage. Some of the assessments are based on front footage and people who have corner lots end up paying more. But but typically, it's it's per lot.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other council comments on that topic before we just move on to individuals? All right, Councilman Rodriguez, please lead us off.
I enjoyed the picnic. It was amazing. I want to thank Mr. Culcarney for the nice pictures you gave me of me and my granddaughter. That was awesome. Thank you. That was awesome. Thank you. It made that, you know, that picture actually made tonight bearable. And I'd say bearable because it's ten o'clock and I've been up since six. And I find this very taxing, this is a very complicated process. And I just don't want it to be argumentative and I don't want people to be throwing people under the rug and just being disrespectful. But with that being said, and and part of that disrespect is when you're talking, people are whispering like now. And and saying and making comments as if you need to say them while other people are talking. Instead of just listening to what people have to say, one of our biggest problems is listening. And then digesting, but look, I get it, that's how it is. Mr. Mayor, you're very good because when I was mayor, I was three minute rule.
Oh, I'm about to comment on that.
Yeah, you're good because. Every municipality in Palm Beach County has a three minute rule. We are the most generous and sometimes being generous is not a good thing, just to say.
No, I'm going to comment on that.
Okay, that's all I have to say. And it was just, I I Bob, thank you for all the hard work with the barbecue. I was sick that day. I tried to help as much as I could, but it was, it was just an amazing. Community event and it made me remember what Lake Clark Shores is about.
Absolutely. Councilman Gonzalez.
I'll try to keep it as short as possible can. Thank you very much for the photos, number one. The picnic was a lot of fun. If you didn't make it, I hope we see you next year. I do want you to know that the Food Bank of Palm Beach County, we, Lake Clark Shores. Donated any of the extras, so nothing went to waste. It it was, it was all very well accepted. Lots of families got to eat off of whatever leftover barbecue we had. And. The Shaw Hoobes are very, very nice at cooking and it was probably some of the best barbecue I've had and. I eat barbecue all over the place and I actually took home barbecue sauce. The FLC University, I touched on it just a little bit. I I just attended this, drove up. And it was a full Friday, seven to to five. And then Saturday, you know, seven till four thirty or so on a Saturday. But I I got to learn a ton about accounting and budgeting and and how, you know, towns run and and so. I want you to know that I'm doing everything that I possibly can to get up to speed with this process and to to be the best. Counsel person, councilman that I can be. I touched on that. I I. There's a poem, I'm not reading it. It's a Robert Frost poem, Mending Wall. If you're listening to this, if you want to look it up when you go to bed, and it's a very nice poem about neighbors. It touches on the fact that fences are very important, but at the end of the day, it's that relationship and and the fence does. Mark your property line. But I want to encourage our our neighbors to mend fences because there's, there's nothing more miserable than living next to a neighbor that you just don't get along with or can't see eye to eye. So. You know, a- as an attorney, one of the things that that we do in mediation, right? A a good settlement is when both parties walk away pissed off or upset. And you know, it's it's taking a little bit less and giving a little bit more. So just please keep that in mind. Rita, Rita Jordan brought up a couple of of things about speeding and speeding tickets and and different things. You know, I I grew up in the neighborhood as well. I remember that Lake Clark Shores had a pretty serious rep- reputation. For giving lots of speeding tickets along Forest Hill. I haven't taken the poll of. The outer community, but I do remember people were scared of us at one point. Don't know if that holds true or not. Or if we can get a little bit more enforcement along, you know, the Forest Hill corridor. And I think that that's reflective sometimes maybe of of our neighborhood. If they know that we're enforcing Forest Hill, they know to to respect our roads interiorly. I don't know if there's a connection with that, but just just an idea. To address Mr. Sacco. You you know, we're we're very passionate, you know, each one of these councilmen are very passionate about this town. And and we as fiduciaries want to take care of it. And make the right decision at the end of the day for everyone. Lastly. I I think it's an overarching communication comment. You know, we have an agenda for a reason. I I want to make sure that we're able to, you know, there's, there's a big concept of civility that we should really employ. And and bring in and. Democracy is messy. That was one of the things that FLC, the Florida League of Cities told us. And they said, look, it's it's the only thing we've got right now, right? And so this is part of that process. It's not perfect. It's flawed. It's got a bunch of problems. But it's the best thing that we have and it's only going to work if we respect each other. And I just wanted to finish with thanking Mary and staff. She's been the entire meeting, writing down notes. And making sure that our me- our minutes are perfect. And well accounted for. And I am so incredibly thankful for the very hard work that our town does. Dan, I say thank you all the time. Charlie, thank you very much. But they really do put in a lot of hours and a lot of effort. Whether you agree with them or not. These are things that that they also have, you know, they can go out and get positions, probably paid a lot higher. But they give us a lot of, a lot of their effort, a lot of their soul and a lot of their passion. So thank you very much and I'll yield.
Thank you. President Pro Tim Freeball.
Trailer is going to be a huge issue. We understand that. We're going to look at it. My sister in law calls me on a regular basis about her location and some of the same problems. We're a boating community. The boat trailers are going to be part of the deal, I think. It's. Placement of trash receptacles, where you put your boat, where you store this. Mr. Doctor, where he has his stuff stored, we are trying to maintain the residential atmosphere here in Lake Clark Shores. That's, this is a residential area. But I also go back to this. Tallahassee takeover. If, correct me if I'm wrong here, but there is some legislation up there regarding home based businesses. And reducing the BTRs that that they can do, right? They can, they can operate a business of any sort, correct? I'm talking to Mr. Clark. I I just said, is there legislation? I didn't say it was a law, legislation that's going to be enacted in the law, two different things, okay? So is there something up there that's going on right now regarding that, Dan? Charlie, no?
I'm not aware, but that doesn't mean it's not going on up there. We will look into it and find out. There's an old expression, when the legislature's in session and they're not in session right now, you keep your horse saddled and your shotgun loaded. Because you never know what they're going to do.
Exactly. It's part of the Tallahassee takeover and it's in a wide variety of aspects, from my opinion. And we've been going to Tallahassee now, meeting with senators, representatives, vetting all of these different things that we have as a small little community. That we want to do. I agree with Ms. Jordan, enforcement is going to slow them down. I had two people call me that were cited for running stop signs. And they basically lamented to me and everything, yelled at me and said, it's a money grab. How much money do we get from a violation for running a stop sign?
If if they go to the county, the county takes the fine and dismisses it and adds it to the. Court cost. So the city gets twelve dollars and fifty cents.
That's not a money grab.
Years ago, you know, now people pay direct, the tickets are expensive, it's two, three hundred dollars.
Sure.
But if they do a change of transfer, go to the county. The the, they drop the fine and add it to the court cost. So the county gets it. Big government's going to get it. And so.
Did I see somewhere where it's three hundred and sixty seven dollars for a speeding ticket?
Some of them can be up to that. When I first came here twenty years ago, we would average anywhere from. Sixty to a hundred thousand in revenue from traffic to help with the budget. I think now it's, I don't know, it's just under, it's under probably under ten thousand, eight thousand. So it's, it's changed.
I'd like to see him slow down. I understand the position, you know, and in the phrase, five, you're fine, six, you're mine. Or some may say, seven, you're fine, nine, you're mine, whatever. The point is, is our demographics are changing. There's a lot of children here. I. We just, we got to figure out a way to slow things down inside here. The traffic is going to get a little bit worse because Florida Mango is going to be being done. The bridge is going to be done. There's going to be a lot of pass through traffic here and there for a lot of different, look what happened today with the train. Did you see all the exit points here in Lake Clark Shores? It was unbelievable. Like, how do you, how do you, you know, how do you get out of here? And so this is going to be a real issue, chief. So and I know you guys are on the job, you know, I'm a, I support everybody. And and they they do their thing. We just got to figure out something about the the, you know, the traffic that's going to be coming our way. And you know, I guess that's about it. We'll leave the rest for the next meeting. It's, you know, that's my bedtime.
Vice Mayor Shalhoub.
I like your old saying. But you know, I wanted to to pick up where Councilman Gonzalez left off about mending fences. There's an old Lebanese saying, a tree that does not bend in the wind will not survive the storm. But at the same time, we must appreciate the fact that we're trying to do our best. And there's a lot of improvement that. Needs to be made on everybody's part. And I try to do a better job every, every day when I get up and go to work. I did want to mention one thing, Mo Mustang has been a resident of Lake Clark Shores for over fifty years. He passed away on Sunday. So may his memory be eternal. The barbecue, what a great event. I had a great event. How about this, over thirteen hundred neighbors and friends came on through the the this town. Event that Sunday. And I mean to tell you, what even made it more spectacular was over one hundred and twenty volunteers. Think about that. You know, I can sit here and tell you that I started out washing the the. The utensils, when I say, you know, spoons in an igloo container, that was my sink. Okay, and now we have just grown expo potentially. And, you know. Our Chief Adams, she was so impressed with all of this stuff. I think it's impressive that we're all able to do it and it gets better and better and better. So they did an interview. I don't know what happened to that interview that they did of all of us. But my comment was, we are still standing. And, you know, after a three year hiatus, it's bigger and better. I just want to thank everybody from the bottom of our hearts. That, you know, another old Lebanese saying, you can't clap with only one hand. And that is proof of, proof evidence of what all this community comes together to do this event. And everybody takes a proprietary interest in the success. And when people come up here to talk about audience comments, and they said, I've been here for thirty years, I've been here fifteen years. They take pride in this community, just like every one of us do. And we're, we're just trying to make it better. Now. The enforcement chief, you know, I've been harping on on the police department, we need more enforcement. I was going to tell you when I was walking the streets running for reelection, the biggest things that, there were four things that stuck out. And I haven't had an opportunity to present them and maybe now is not the time. But the topic is enforcement. You need enforcement. And. Code enforcement, you need code enforcement. So. I'll expound on that as we go on further, but I just wanted to say, chief, keep up the good work. We have great officers. Look what they did. They saved people's lives. And their motto is the. Excellence through service. And that's what we have to do. We have to serve our community. We have to be there for them. And. I think it was Ms. Jordan. Rita, she talked about the the placement of the. The traffic awareness, that makes so much sense. And maybe we need to look at it. Differently or maybe reevaluate where we place them. Because I wanted one of those as to be part of the the guidelines. I wanted to know what that that data was and how it's collected to influence our decision if we're going to look at. Traffic tables or speed humps or whatever. But the, I think it. I think it was a very pragmatic approach to a very serious issue. And I'm glad she she mentioned it. And I just wanted to say I'm glad that she did. And on Mr. Seko's remark that, you know, more diversity, hey, look, everybody's. Up for reelection every other year. We're only two year terms. And if somebody can make a difference, I think that's great. But at the same time, just because we all agree, maybe we all agree because that's the right thing that's coming before us. And if there's an issue, if there's a, maybe we should just, you know, disagree just to disagree, maybe that might. You know, we, we're just doing the best we can. And I'm, I tell you what, I. I I pride the, I look at the staff, Mary is is fantastic. So is all of the other people. They're still in the little. Cubicle in there, you know, making sure we do what we're supposed to do. And Emily's still listening to us. But Dan Clark is is our drum major. He's the one that keeps us all together. And when he teaches us the issues and. We have a choice between A, B, and we're going, wait a minute, Dan. Everyone up here says, do we have another choice? Is there option C? And that's when we get things done. So I just want to say thank you all very, very much. And. Everybody who worked on that barbecue did a fantastic job. Not one cross word. No one said that the food wasn't good. No one. We did a good job. And I tell you what. Mr. Mayor, you did a great job on the barbecue. Thank you very much. I loved your serving with you.
Always. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I echo everyone's sentiments on the, on the barbecue. It was. Such a joy to finally be back in action in that regard with everybody. You know. I've done it in the past for other meetings. I didn't do it today. That's probably because I just didn't appreciate how many residents wanted to talk. But we do have a three minute rule and that is primarily done to that as many residents can speak without, without further delay. And part of that, that's on me, not enforcing it today. But another thing that delays that is. There are probably questions that you might have coming into the meeting. I encourage you to ask those questions, especially if it's a series of questions ahead of time. Call me, call a member of the council, call Dan Clark, email him in, whatever you can, so that you can make the best use of your three minutes to communicate to us. Your concerns, your issues, your thoughts. More than happy to answer any questions that you posed today, or posed at any meeting, but it will eat into the three minutes and. We were fortunate to have a packed house today. Most of our meetings lately have been a packed house, going all the way into the, into the other room, which is great. I love seeing that type of level of engagement. I have no problem with y'all coming up and saying, hey, I got an issue with X, Y and Z. That's why we have these meetings. But to make the best use of your time, if you have direct questions, such as why isn't the website updated? Ask that the moment you realize the website's not updated. Right? That was a a month ago, the email. So. We can answer those questions outside of those three minutes, so you can have the most use of those three minutes. And the next meeting, I'm going to implement it, whether there's ten people here or fifty like we had today or how many there were. I think that'd be, that'll be the best thing. So my apologies for, for doing that, but once it started, I I couldn't stop it. I didn't want to cut people off. And a lot of people went six minutes, eight minutes, ten minutes. Some kept it short. So I'll do better on that the next time around. Let's see here. And I also, I said this earlier, I do post stuff online. I do that because I want to share information. I could easily not do that. And I could just come up here and counsel comments and tell everybody what I wanted to say three weeks ago or two weeks ago. I just don't like that idea. If I can share it with you all and put it out there, there's so many different ways to actually contact me, please do. If you have an issue, don't rely on the social media. I'm not relying on social media. I'm using it as an avenue to disperse information. If you want to talk about what the information I dispersed, please contact me directly. I'm not trying to create discord in the community when I do that. There's going to be opinions on things that I post. And it's going to be, well, I disagree with you. And then there's going to be a resident that agrees with me. And then there's going to be an off topic, not related. And then there's going to be discussion on that. It should be healthy. I don't do these things to promote discord. I don't do them to have infighting. I do them to share information. And that's going to beget other people getting involved and that's fine. But keep in mind, if you have an issue with something that I've done, contact me directly. If you have a question, contact me directly. As Mr. and Mrs. Brandonberg know, I receive texts, phone calls, emails. I meet, I answer, I respond. I'm always happy to do that at any point in time. So that being said, before our next meeting, we're going to have the Fourth of July. So happy Fourth of July to everybody. I hope you have a healthy and safe weekend. Celebrating on our month is going to be a little odd, but nonetheless, it's our Independence Day that we should be celebrating. So go out, enjoy it with your family and friends. Thank you all for a wonderful meeting. Sorry it ran so long. Take a motion. All, is there a second? All in favor? Motion carries.
Ashok, thank you so very, very much.
Yes, thank you very much for the photos. I forgot, I had it written down. I forgot to mention that.